Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Holyoke School Committee meeting. Today is May fifteenth, and the meeting will begin at six oh six P. M. Can we please have roll call, please, Ms. Garcia?
Mayor Garcia. Mr. Fave.
Present.
Ms. Brunel.
Here.
Mr. Romero.
Here.
Ms. Tensley Williams.
Present.
Ms. Rivera Colon.
Here.
Ms. Feliciano. Mr. Willehan.
Here.
Mr. Calamore.
Here.
And Mrs. Wilson.
Here.
All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
United States of America, the Republic, one nation, under God, and equal, justice for all.
So, welcome, everyone. Before we begin our meeting, I just have a short announcement that we repeat every single month, and it just has to do on our remote meetings. So, on March twenty ninth, twenty twenty-three, Governor Healy signed into law an act relative to extending certain state of emergency accommodations, which, among other things, extends the expiration of the provisions pertaining to the open meeting law to March thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. Specifically, this extension allows public bodies to continue holding meetings remotely without a quorum of the public body, physically present at a meeting location, and to provide adequate alternative access to remote meetings. The act does not make any new changes to the open meeting law other than extending the expiration date of the temporary provisions regarding remote meetings from March thirty-first, twenty twenty-three to March thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. The notice is hereby given in accordance... Oh, I'm gonna pass that. Pursuant to Mass General Law's Chapter Thirty A, Section Twenty, I am hereby informing all attendees that a video and audio recording is being made of the meeting, and the meeting is being livestreamed and run live on the city's community TV channel. That was my announcement, okay? So, moving on, do I have a thumbs up? Okay, we have a thumbs up, so we're gonna go ahead and move on with our student showcase, and I'll pass that over to Superintendent Receiver, Mr. Soto.
Yeah, thank you. As you can see, we have a packed room. So, today, our student showcase is going to be the Kelly Dual Language Program. We have our great Principal Erin Morris, who can come up and just talk about what we're gonna... What we're showcasing today.
Muchisimas gracias por estar aqui esta tarde a cantarnos esta canción. Anybody have any questions, comments? They did an awesome job. Ms. Wilson.
How long have you been practicing the song?
Oh, my God.
Only uno o dos dias? Very good, very good, my friends.
Ms. Tensley Williams.
All I have to say is muy... How do I say beauty? Muy bien.
That's okay. Ms. Rivera Colon.
Yo sé que no es muy fácil pararse al frente de un montón de gente y empezar a cantar una canción que practicaron hace un minuto. Hicieron un muy buen trabajo. Great job, everybody.
Alrighty, we're gonna go ahead and move on. The next item on the agenda is public comment. Ms. Garcia, did anybody submit via email or sign up?
No public comment.
Okay, we're moving on with no public comment. Next is communications and reports, so we have student reports. Mr. Kennedy.
Good evening, everyone. I have just a few reports for today. First, Carpentry is currently building the school store. That opens opportunities for all nine different CTE programs to provide merchandise to sell and promote services. Then, next one, in the world of health assisting, all of the health assisting students that were present on May twelfth were certified in both CPR and Stop the Bleed. I, as one of those students, can tell you it felt very good to get our first certification. Also, in health assisting, a total of nine juniors and seniors have earned their CNA licenses, which is their goals. Now, I have co-op updates. Out of around a hundred and fifty-five eligible juniors and seniors, ninety-six students applied for co-op opportunities. Currently, we have thirty-two students co-op ready in both eleventh and twelfth grade. Additionally, juniors have still... Excuse me, still have time to apply or find co-op opportunities. Twenty-one students have been placed or found co-op positions and were placed. Seven out of nine programs have students who are out in the field. Auto Collision led the way this year with a total of nine eleventh and twelfth grade students out working. If you know of any local businesses that would like to build a partnership and get involved, please reach out to our college and career counselors, Counselor Savannah Hennessy, or our CTE Director and Co-op Coordinator, Chris Kelly. If you'd like their emails, just send me an email, and I will... And I will... Yeah, I'll send you the email. On May sixth, Dean partnered with Make-A-Wish Foundation to host a car show. This huge event led by Mr. Vera and student government representatives was quite a success. With over a hundred-plus cars in attendance, along with a generous raffle donation by Jose Ramos from Ramos Detailing, we were able to raise roughly fifteen hundred dollars. Next, National Technical Honor Society Celebration and Induction was held May fourth. We had fifteen seniors who were inducted and fifteen juniors who became inductees. Thank you, Mr. Calamore, for attending and supporting. Veteran teacher Sarah Pacheco... Oh, I always mess up on that name, I'm so sorry. Were honored by Dean Campus, together with Eagle Eye Institute and the Department of Conservation and Recreation, on May eleventh, twenty twenty-three. With over thirty-five years of service to Holyoke Public Schools, it is indefinite that she has made a lasting impact on Holyoke students, staff, and families. Her passion for student learning and impeccable ability to foster significant student gains are some of her most notable contributions to Dean Campus. A rose bush was planted in honor of Ms. Pacheco. The math department held its math... Excuse me, held its... Held MCAS review sessions beginning April twenty-sixth for one hour following the school day every Wednesday through the end... Or, excuse me, through the week before MCAS. Our math team welcomed students who wanted to get some extra prep. May sixteenth and seventeenth are the days that tenth-grade students will be taking the math MCAS. I am thrilled, can't you tell? Prom... Prom for the juniors and seniors were held May eleventh at the log cabin. And lastly, graduation is June first, beginning promptly at five-thirty in the gymnasium. Thank you for listening to my babble. Are there any questions?
Hold on one moment, Ms. Tensley Williams.
Let's see. We currently have thirty... We currently have thirty-two students who are co-op ready. Yes, there are a hundred and fifty-five eligible, ninety-six applied, and there are thirty-two who are actually ready to go out into the field.
Are there any further questions for Mr. Kennedy? Thank you so much, Mr. Kennedy. Do we have a representative from Holyoke High School North Campus? Do not. Ms. Brunel.
Do we know why? We haven't seen somebody from Holyoke High in quite a while.
It's baseball season... Softball season started, and Jake Ali's probably either hasn't practiced.
Couldn't student government send someone else in there? Oh, hold on, hold on.
Oh, hi!
Samantha, come on up! Join us! Come on over here!
Come to the table, Samantha.
Hi, welcome!
Okay, hi, I'm Samantha Rodriguez, I'm a freshman at Holyoke High School.
Hey, Samantha.
I have some things that happened recently at Holyoke High School.
Good job, Erin.
I just made her appear.
Um, I don't know really how this works, but I have just a bunch of things.
You can just take your time, if you're not in a rush, just share with us, okay?
Okay. For the California trip the redesign team took, we learned... Yeah, I'm sorry, this is very new.
Don't worry, take your time, and it's just like you telling us what's happening at Holyoke High School North.
This past Friday, there were eight students who celebrated earning the seal of literacy. We're working strong to get... Have some fun things towards the end of the year. This upcoming Friday, we're having a student versus faculty volleyball game. For senior celebrations, the Senior Sunset will happen on May twenty-fifth, with the senior class starting the year by seeing a sunrise, they're now gonna end the year by seeing a sunset. The Senior Breakfast will happen May twenty-eighth. Honors Day is May thirtieth. Class Day is May thirty-first. The prom is happening on June first, and graduation will happen on June fourth at twelve o'clock on Mackenzie Field. There were senior seminar capstone projects that were shared in freshman seminar classes. The logos for the tenth-grade academies were designed by students at Holyoke High School. And yeah, that's really what happened recently.
Excellent, thank you so much.
Did great.
Are there any questions for Ms. Rodriguez? Oh, Mr.... Okay, hold on one moment. Go ahead, because you had...
Just want the two of you to promise me that whatever senior things are going on at the school, it's gonna be nothing like what happened in Ludlow a couple weeks ago.
I'm sorry, I'm a little bit confused.
Don't worry, there's just...
Oh, gotcha, got it. Okay, Ms. Tensley Williams.
At twelve o'clock.
Okay, so, just so you're aware, Ms. Rodriguez, welcome again. Please don't feel scared, we're really nice people. We only get mad at him. But if at any point through... If, you know, however long you decide to stay at the meeting tonight, if at any point there's something that we're discussing about, and just as Mr. Kennedy, you wanna give, you know, a comment, or you have questions, just raise your hand. I'm looking to see who's raising their hands, and I'll call upon you, okay? We always like to get the perspective of that of the student. Again, we're here for the students, right? That's why we were elected into the positions that we're in. So, it's all about you guys and ensuring that you guys get the education that you deserve, okay? Alrighty, so with that being said, next on the agenda is report of the Vice Chair. So, one of the things that I've... That I'm hearing going around at other districts, they're talking about goal setting, right? I think it's really important that school committee boards develop some sort of goal that they're striving to complete, right? And right now, since we've been talking so much about, you know, getting our districts back and getting out of receivership, to get there, we needed to do our trainings, right? So, I had put something down that, you know, if you guys think it's appropriate, this could be our first goal, that could be attainable, and that is for the Holyoke School Committee, we'll complete their training by August twenty twenty-three. Although it's, what, three months away, right? We only have, I think it's six modules left. And so, next week is our next training, and that will be on collective bargaining and ethics. Okay? I would have done collective bargaining and budget, but that would have been a long night. And I think everybody wants to be home before midnight, right? Okay, so, it'll just be on collective bargaining and ethics, and then there we will discuss how we're gonna proceed with our next module, okay? And the dates. Ms. Wilson.
I have us having a scheduled training on June twenty-sixth.
So, that's another one, but then we needed one more.
Right, so I'm just saying, but I still had this twenty-sixth as listed as, so we're just looking at one more.
One more date. So, if we wanna finish by... So, we wanna finish by August twenty twenty-three. So, we have one more, and we can discuss it at next... At next week's meeting, so that way, everybody is well, you know, has that information well in advance. Mr. Willehan.
We normally don't meet what months? I forget what month.
July, we don't meet.
We don't meet in July, so maybe if we can have... Meet the training in...
In July.
July, that's what I recommend.
Well, we'll see what's available. Like I said, we'll talk about it next week. At the meeting, we'll look at all the tentative dates, if we wanna do it as a weekend-type thing, a Sunday, a Saturday, I don't know. Alrighty, so, everybody's good with the goal... With the goal of the Holyoke School Committee will complete their training by August twenty twenty-three? All right, great.
I have a question.
Okay, go right ahead, Ms. Wilson.
Are you looking for any other goals for the school committee?
Once we complete that one, another goal.
Okay.
So, we continue looking at where we wanna be and what we wanna do, and see for ourselves as a board. And then, each time we reach a certain goal, we create a new one. Sounds like a plan? Too many goals will drive us nuts, especially if... Like, the amount of goals, and yes, I am being very sarcastic here, are many goals in the turnaround plan. That's a lot. So, for us, it's... We're gonna... I like to see where we attained something, now we move to something else. Any other questions? No. Okay, so, the next thing that I have on the... Under my report is a turnaround plan, specific priority areas. So, one of the things that I started doing was actually printing out the original turnaround plan from when we were taken over into receivership, and the reasons why, and what they were looking at. So, much of what I hear is when you're taken into receivership, right? There's really no... No specifics on how you get your district back, right? Or when, correct? But... If you really read into it, it talks about that the state, when they come in, they create this turnaround plan to, you know, turn around a district and get it to where it needs to be, right? So, that, to me, must mean that that is the benchmark. Now, I've got a lot... Still a lot more reading to do to see how many times this may have changed in respects to, "Oh, now I found something else." "Oh, now, now I'm thinking of this," 'cause then, that, to me, is telling me that at no point was I ever going to give you back the district, because all of a sudden, I found something else, even though that's on your terms, right? In the sense that that happened on your time, not my time. But now, it changes. Do you understand what I'm trying to say?
Trying to follow.
So, okay. So, I create this turn... These were the initial problems that I found. And as I create this turnaround plan, right? In three years, supposedly, we're working off of this to turn the district around. But in three years, I find out, mm, you know? Now, there's another problem. Now, it's another problem that was on your time when you took over, under your plan.
To the state.
It's not something that was caused or created when we were not in receivership, right? So, the turnaround plan is created based on what the issues were that they found, based on that the school committee did not address or fix while the district was under their control. Right? That's what they were saying. That for the past twenty years, yada, 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 you guys allowed for this to happen, and these were the things that happened that led to that decision. So, it's just like healthcare. I initially find this problem with you, this is what I'm gonna do. Now, as I do these interventions, right? Now, you have no control of what I'm doing. As you work on these interventions, if the interventions now create another problem, that was not us who should have been part of that problem or be held accountable for that problem. Because remember, they will not give back a district until the school committee can prove that they will be able to carry the district forward and continue moving in a forward path, right? But if you created the problem under your plan, now you change it or add something else three years later, and now, three more years later, it changes again, 'cause now more things happen and more things changed, and you can't base our performance on something that you created. So, we need to really start being vigilant on what they created in the turnaround plan. What have we met? Right? Because there has to be an end to this. I saw the meeting for the budget for your middle school, and to hear a comment from a city counselor saying, when you guys had mentioned that the school committee will give... What was it? Was five hundred thousand a year for thirty years? Something to that extent? And he goes, "Well, how do we know that the school committee, you know... Or, how do we know that they will... The state will continue to give it to us for thirty years?" So, I had no plans in the school committee being... Or, the district to be in receivership for thirty years more. So, with that being said, is we have to now really start looking at what the plan was. Did it keep changing? Because we need to be a little bit more stricter and hold more accountable if the state is not meeting their goals like they should be. I mean, they're the ones who said that they can do it. What was that thing? We didn't do a significant change, and that's why they had to take the district from us, right? We are going into year nine. Nine, and I have not seen significant. We have done a lot of gains, but these were things that we had already started implementing before we were taken over. And this has nothing to do with you, Receiver Superintendent Soto. I'm saying in general, okay, from day one to now. Because what it looks like is the whole... The school committee and the board is not doing their job for the district. And so, our students are not succeeding, because the school committee is not doing their job. You can't hold us accountable for a plan that you created with no input from the school committee. Mayor Garcia.
Is... Is there an... Are you... Try to reframe my thoughts here. There are debates out there that I'm sure each of us have heard, and we can get into that debate and go back and forth about what's the state doing different, school board could have done different, has it really improved under this... You know, could these improvements could have made under the... Under the school board? If we were just giving a little more... The debate goes back and forth. I don't like to focus on that. I think the fact of the matter is, we are where we are today. The receivership happened, the state did their thing. There's a lot of positive that this body has been doing to help kind of shepherd things through and support. There are some things that this body have brought up that were very helpful to some of the decisions made. So, you know, there's a lot of good collaboration going on, a lot of focus. I remember earlier on, we were talking about the turnaround plan, that, yeah, to your point, that we should be looking at the benchmarks and holding the district accountable as to whether or not they're actually making any improvements, and which led to Anthony, you know, really taking a deeper dive and putting it together, a turnaround plan that was more strategic and focused and less wonky and unattainable. The last plan had unattainable goals, more broad goals, and so, that discussion that this body had encouraged the receiver to put something that was a little bit more realistic. Either way, and I'll say, we're in a public meet, I anticipate local control back within two years, if not sooner. And there are discussions and work that this body's working on that is contributing toward that transition, and we should continue to do that and support that. And there was, under receivership, despite what we think, who could have done what better, what... The benefit that I always share with people is that the amount of flexibility they had to do things that we wouldn't be able to do if we were under local control because of local political pressure. Despite the fact that we want local control and doesn't take away the fact of the structural and institutional issues that our city had within the school district, that no matter how many times members brought it up, it just never unraveled. And then, we get superintendents that continue to contribute to that structural issues, and we've never really gone beyond that. And so, if there's any credit we can give under this receivership model is the fact that all... A lot of that, because of their flexibility, we're able to unravel that and restructure and reorganize and rezone and doing all... And implementing equity programs and whatnot, and really making sure that the administration looks like the kids we're serving and so forth. They've done a lot of work on that part, that I'm... I was on the school board, sitting in Ward One seat. It was an uphill battle, trying to bring up new ideas and being looked at as if you... You know what I mean? So, I think that there's a lot of good around that front. I agree, I think, you know, I still think we still need local control, 'cause the day we start moving away from the values of what it means to govern ourselves is... we start moving away from the values of what it means to govern ourselves is the day that we continue to contribute to the idea of dictatorship almost. Like first is the schools, next thing you know, it's another program or service. Hey, let's take away control of the fire department, then is the police, then is other service. No, we need to make sure that we're supporting the values of what it means and that we're educating the public about what it means to have control over the services that are tax, that are funded through taxpayers. At the same time, we're here, they're doing the thing, we're talking about transitioning. I, 30, I, they're on notice, we want local control. Um, and again, informally, a lot of conversations happening about transitioning, um, uh, to local control. We have a governor that is, uh, although there hasn't been anything on paper yet, she just got in. But I'm confident that there will be a plan soon that, on paper, that offers more, you know, more confidence in the, that this is coming, that this isn't just hearsay, that we will have it soon. Um, but again, like, yeah, there, there's that debate, what the, could have done what better, whether or not it improved. And we can go back and forth on that and have factual information. We can focus on that or we can just stay focused on, um, continuing to advocate for local control and doing what we need to do to get it back. Um, are just some cents, two cents I wanted to throw out there.
No, and I fully respect what you're saying. Um, I hear you when you're saying that there, there may be backroom talk, although the Secretary of Education, Tuttweiler, there is no plans.
Nope.
Um, for Holyoke to get their, their district back, whether or not.
They just got in there.
But whether or not, I'm just saying, whether or not we, like, we have been working on this for, for several years now, I want to say maybe three years, um, that a group of us have met with, with the commissioner.
But that's what I meant, that there's not backroom discussions you guys have been doing to work.
Right, but it's just, like, like I said, I think we need to start being more focused on making sure that we're meeting the benchmarks that are currently being put, as we all saw the panorama survey, right? It kind of all ties in together. And we want to make sure that, being that we are being held accountable for the outcomes, no matter who makes the decisions, we need to be well on top of this and hold those accountable who, who created whatever the plan is, right? So if there is a plan or a benchmark to meet something, well, you better have the data shown or whatever tools that you're using to make sure that we reach that goal. Ms. Wilson.
So, so, you know, my biggest issue overall is that it doesn't seem like there's an actual endpoint. There's nothing where we can actually strive to achieve. There is, if, if I were in any business and I put together a takeover plan of a business that was so generic and I had stakeholders such as, you know, people who own stock in my business, there would be an uproar because of the fact that there is nothing, you know, there, there are strategic plans, yes, there are, but there is nothing from the standpoint of what are the stakeholders, what can they look to, to see this is what we can do to get out of this? How do we get out of this? How do we move forward? And the fact is, it's so generic that that has been since day one, my concern, that first of all, there is no way for us to measure how we're doing. And once we get there, they can create a whole nother plan for us to meet because the state feels that now as a city, we, uh, school system, we need to do A, B, and C. So my concern is something we're grasping at that we really don't even, it's in the dark. We really don't know what we're shooting for. Because we have never been given clear information as to what the state wants us to do. And where have they been from the standpoint of meeting their own directives? And it's, you're our representative here, Mr. Soto, but you are not the state. And so my question is, where is, you know, you know, the education? Where is our state, you know, giving presentations to our community as to where we are? Because you are just one person and you do not make the decision, Mr. Soto, as to are we meeting these, you know, benchmarks or not? Because again, it's, it's an evolutionary process and I feel as though that, you know, we say that thank goodness we have this new governor because the new governor has these ideas, um, and, you know, that she does not support this. But on the other hand, what happens if now there's another governor who's back to supporting it and we're not out by then? It's on the whim of a governor, but right now, that we are going to get out of receivership, is how I feel.
I know, um, I know you, you two would like to speak, but I'm gonna go ahead, um, with Mr. Soto because he did wanna.
Yeah, just, um, a lot to unpack there, but, yeah, no, I'm not the state, but I do, you know, I do represent the commissioner. Um, and we have been providing the school committee and the community updates on a quarterly basis. Um, I do want to reiterate that all of the benchmarks that you see, the quote, quote unquote turnaround plan are same benchmarks that are in our strategic plan and the state didn't come in, this entity, to create our strategic plan. We went out to the community. In fact, we've had a couple of school committee members involved in, in helping develop that strategic plan and setting those benchmarks. And just as recently as two weeks ago, we had another school committee, uh, thank you, Swellahan, for, for, for participating, reviewing the, the strategic plan and making refinements for next year. So this is really a, a Holyoke strategic plan. There are benchmarks in there that, that every single community is held to. So like the benchmark around graduation rate, around chronic absenteeism, like they're looking at that across the entire district to then state where you rate in their accountability system. So that is the one thing I think that, like, yes, the, the state's accountability system, everybody has to, um, everybody has to have that benchmark as, as, you know, something that gets monitored regularly. But the, the stuff that you see in the turnaround plan, the revised one, is the same stuff that's in this strategic plan. And I have been providing regular updates to the school committee and the state on our progress towards that. Many of the benchmarks, you don't, you don't have access to until the year's over. Like, we don't know what our graduation rate is because haven't reached that point yet. But, um, if you look at every single update that I've provided the school committee, you know, that is our measure of how are we doing, how are we tracking towards benchmarks that were set? And the only thing that I would ask is that if, if that process isn't working and if we need to start thinking about doing something different, please let me know. Um, I would encourage you to, you know, there's a quarter three update right now. It tells you specifically where we're at with, you know, 17 of the strategic priorities that were named in there. Tells you like crystal clear where we're at, we're on target or we're not. And then there's others that it says, we don't have this information yet, we'll, we'll update you at the end of the school year. And then there's others where it says, you know what, we're not meeting this benchmark right now. You know, where kids are at relative to grade level standards in ELA and math, we're not meeting that. But on the growth standard, we are, we're on track to meet that. So it's all in your packet right now. It, it was in your packet for quarter two and, and quarter one. And if that method of, of tracking process is not working, please let me know. So like, we can talk about like, how can we have a better tracking on, on where we're at with the process? Because I thought the first time we did our Q1 update, that feedback that I got was like, this is good, thank you. Two update, thank you for the update. And now it appears like we're not giving any updates, but I feel like we have. I mean, the, it in your packet is the Q3 update. There's some benchmarks at the end of the year that we will, for sure, where, you know, where we're at with, we've been doing chronic absenteeism is one of them. And every school committee meeting, give an update on chronic absenteeism. Um, so I guess what I'm looking for and, and I, you know, is, is, are those updates helpful and what's missing so that we can, I want to make sure that I'm meeting your needs? I don't feel like the school committee is, you know, has been absent or is doing the district wrong or any of that stuff. Like, I feel like we have been working really well together and every decision that I've made, you have been able to influence or at least create an opinion on where you stand. And I've been like, you guys have a lot of influence on some of the things I make. Whether you, whether I have to take that into consideration or not, is, you know, that's just not how I've operated. I think I work really well with all of you and I think all of you have your hearts in the right place and you want to do good by, by the students of Holyoke Public Schools. And you, you and I share that in common. We're all here for the kids, so like, I would just appreciate any feedback on, on how those updates have been and, and what's missing so that I can work with our team to develop something that, that may be more palatable to.
All right, so I know I have Ms. Tensley Williams and then Ms. Brunel.
I don't have much to say. Uh, Mr. Soto has answered a lot of the things that I was thinking, uh, while he was talking. But sometimes, no matter how good you do, your good is not good enough. And we have to get to a point in life where, where will this end? Um, you know, there's a start to everything, there's a middle and there's an end. And like Ms. Lefave said, you know, it's almost like we're beating a dead horse because we're going around in a circle like a dog chasing his tail and we're not getting anywhere fast. And I think we've all had it. We're all doing the best we can and sometimes your best is not good enough and that's got to stop. We're working on it. Give, tell us, give us a plan and we will follow that plan. When we pass that one, we'll go to the next one. So I'm piggybacking, but enough is enough. You know, you stand up quick, speak bold and sit down, but say something when you're speaking. So thank you, you know, we're all working together. We have a team here and I'm happy to really be on this board. And it looked like we're not getting anywhere, but we are. And just don't give up the ship, just keep on fighting. We will win. We will win. Thank you.
Ms. Brunel.
So one of my main issues I have about receivership and when we come out of receivership and how do we come out of receivership is we basically tried, right? We tried to initiate the conversation. Basically, according to the law, I believe we simply need to ask to be taken out of receivership. So we had the commissioner in in a private meeting. He's no longer commissioner, so I can talk about it openly now. He sat there across the room for us and said, the problems in Holyoke are not, are no longer unique to Holyoke, especially because of the pandemic. So if the problem, some of the problems we're facing here in Holyoke are not unique to Holyoke, like, why are they still holding grasp on us? And I feel like part of the problem is we have such a wonderful local person in as our receiver slash superintendent, that I feel like the state is taking advantage of it because in, on the surface, it seems like we're running like a regular district. You know, Mr. Soto's never been here when we weren't in receivership, even when he was the head of finance. So I think that's the main problem I have these days, right? Is like, nobody in leadership in central office was here pre-receivership now. A lot of people have never worked in a district that had full local control. So there's just that gap of understanding, like, well, what does it even mean to be in local control versus be in receivership? The bottom line is, it's local governance to have say over how your schools are, are, are dealt with, you know, like, as simple as, we had a, a finance committee meeting the other night and Mickey, who I fully respect, came from Springfield, a district that was under financial review, so they didn't have the full authority either. Flawless as to the actual budget process with the functioning school committee. So that's what bothers me as a district, is that the district no longer knows what it's like to be a fully functioning district, right? We used to have weekly, very long budget meetings, building the budget with the superintendent. It's not just this, you know, it wasn't the superintendent who constructed everything and then brought it to us and we simply just said, okay, no. You didn't like a line item, you got to talk about it. You wanted to see lacrosse get implemented, you made sure you made an argument for it and ultimately, if we all voted on it, then something else got cut and lacrosse got implemented, right? So I think that's what bothers me is just the, everyone feels kind of like content and complacent because things are going well, we've got a great guy in leadership, you know, we're start, we're making gains, granted not fast, but with COVID, no district is. So, so where do we go? How do we go from here to here, right? We have longer days, we put more on our teachers, we put more on our students, we focus too much on math and literacy, we test the crap, test the wahus out of our kids to get them to perform. Like, we need to look at like, what is Finland doing? You know, kids don't even have to start school till the age of seven. They have hours of recess and play and, and science learning in the woods and, you know, what we're doing as a educational system as a whole in this country is not working? So that needs to be evaluated. But getting back to the local argument, like, there's been no, in my opinion, no, no precise update since COVID, right? We had all these benchmarks, we knew where we needed to reach pre-COVID. And yes, we've had, we have a new turnaround plan post-COVID, but like, I want the commissioner to come sit out here again. Come look at us, us in the face as a school committee and tell us where we need to be according to you. You know, I fully support Maury Healy, I really do believe that the governor is gonna help find an end to receivership, but as of right now, the commissioner has no end in sight. Why would he? It doesn't benefit him to, for us to come back under local control. But we need to, we need to have, say, under the budget, we need to go back to having a proper bargaining, uh, teachers' union, you know? There's, there's just so much, there's so much to the governing of us having local control. And I agree with Ms. Lefave that we need to focus more on how we get out of it, but I firmly believe that starts with inviting the commissioner back out here to sit here with us. I don't care if it has to be half of us in one session so that it's not a public meeting, but, you know, we need, we need to hear from them more definitively, like, you know, how many other districts are struggling in the same position we are since COVID? You know, with attendance, attendance especially is so hard. We tell the kids, don't come to school if you're sick, but then we send me a letter because my kids missed seven days of school, like, you know, saying you might threaten them with bringing all kinds of crazy stuff, but like, you know, and then some of the stuff that did change in, in receivership, you look at attendance rate, graduation rate, suspension rate. Sure, we drastically changed the suspension rate, but look at what some of the kids are getting away with now in, in disciplinaries in some of the schools. You know, it's gotten better again from when it was its worst, but a lot of the staff we lost wasn't necessarily just because of receivership stuff. It was because, not receivership stuff in the sense of salary and hours, it was the stuff like, let's make these numbers better as quickly as possible so we're not going to suspend the kid for cursing out his teacher in the hallway or, you know, whatever it may be. So there's just so many reasons why, and I just thank you for bringing it up because even though we do have a great person in leadership, it's, it's just not the way a district's meant to run. And I will be there to help pound down the door to get him to come here and find a solution.
Mr. Romero.
So Anthony asked us, um, maybe give an example of, of how to, um, say, make it out a little bit. Um, maybe if I had like, uh, just a chart, you know what I mean? Just line here, then here, where we started, where we're at, where we gotta be. And that would, that would help clarify a little bit.
Mr. Collmar.
Yeah, uh, when the commissioner was here, quite a while ago, I had a discussion with him about the Morgan School, just as an example, Morgan School. He says, the Morgan School has been so much better and so much better that we at the state are very, very proud of them. We're gonna recognize them. I said to him, what you have to do, I reckon- I said to him, what you have to do, by recognizing him, is tell the city, not just the school committee, tell the city that we're now, get a level five, you're level four. And we have to find out, we have to go from level five down to level one before, uh, they turn over receivership. But that's not coming out of the state for us. Some ideas on how we can improve and how we can improve and how we can improve. We have to see it from the state level telling us we are now at level three, we are now at level two. Where are we at this point in the game? Are we, is the city of Holyoke still in level five? Or have we improved that much that we're down to level four or down to level three? They haven't done that, and this is what the city is looking. And I think it's time that the commissioner comes out, really comes out and says, you have improved so much, we are reducing you to level four or level three.
So, oh, Mr. Kennedy?
I'm sorry, I know I generally restrict myself to receiver reports, but I have a clarification question. Um, that, and any of you three would know the answer to this, but my understanding of receivership is the state is under control. So when the, assuming, um, we extract from it shortly, will the, uh, sorry, the state mandates also come out, like all the, like the MCAS, the ANET, the STAR, all those? Oh, those heads change real quickly. No, no?
You were really excited. You were hoping that I would be doing one of these, weren't you?
I saw, but I mean, because I know there are a lot of state mandates, and I'm pretty sure those tests are one of them, so.
Then you better advocate for the I thrive act.
Oh, don't worry. So, uh, we'll still be expected to, uh, like, as she mentioned, um, get tested like crazy and stretched super thin. Okay. Just, just clarifying, you gotta put it in my notes.
Yes, you still would be. Um, so, um, Mr. Soto, I know that you felt that, you know, maybe there was a misperception of thinking like, you weren't giving us information, right? So I'm gonna be very clear to you guys and to the public. If I'm gonna tell you one thing is, that does happen here, is we do get the update. There is definitely one district in receivership that finally got one update after thirteen years. Okay? And it was a simple, one piece of paper with very little written on it, okay? I do not want to ever get to that point. That district has also, is finally having meetings. But now there's talks of other things happening there, and it definitely isn't for them to get back their district. Okay? That's not where I want to be, okay? And it's unfortunate, and so, um, that's why I, I honestly believe that Holyoke, Lawrence, and Southbridge should be uniting. We should be collaborating together with our, um, colleagues from those school committees, because we should be supporting one another. We should not be working in silos and then eventually working against each other, okay? Like, who's gonna get their district back first? We're supposed to be supporting one another and figuring out, how do we change the narrative of, of, you know, because if you really look, what districts are under receivership? What else about them? Predominantly Hispanic, okay? Those are the ones that are being taken over. Even across the country, because Texas and Texas, another district was taken over, okay? So with that being said, I'm not saying, um, Mr. Soto, that you don't provide us the updates. What I'm trying to say is, is that we still need to start looking and really focusing specifically on that, because if that turnaround plan was created with the, with the mindset of that of the student, that's why we're here, right? With the mindset of that of the student. So with that being said, under receivership, it's as if I feel sometimes that I'm just here to receive a report, right? And I'm gonna sit and say, oh, that's great, mhm, awesome. And that's it, because I really don't have, I'm sorry, but it's, you know, that's how, that's how you feel, so. You know, sometimes people might be like, oh my god, Mildred's eyes are crossing on TV. Yeah, well, I don't know what to say, but it, and it becomes frustrating because, no disrespect to Ms. Garcia or anybody in your role, but look at us right now, policies, right? If we want to show that we're trying to do things the way that it should be, we can't even get our darned policies that we talked about six months ago to finally say, okay, hey, is it gonna be, gonna be done? Is it not gonna be done? Yes, maybe not. Our policies from six months ago when we initially started, so I'm still waiting for it to go, go back and decide, okay, is it gonna come to us finally to say, hey, Mr. Soto, we recommend you to, um, approve the changes. I'm still waiting for that, but, right? And now we're getting into more policies, am I correct? And so now those will be behind again. It's as if we're lacking in so many thi, I, I guess we're trying to do too much, but we ain't doing, we ain't finishing that one, one thing. And that's why, if we were to start the transition into receivership, out of receivership, into receivership, somebody hang me. Um, out of receivership, I would, I would recommend, give me the darn policies first, let me revamp those things, and that way we can make the decisions real quick and get them up to date. And then we look at the budget, taking over the budget, but we gotta show something. I mean, the state has to give us something. You can't, you can't hold us accountable for something that we don't have really any say, even though, yes, you do ask for our input. Yes, you do take that into consideration when you make your decision, but it's still not the same. Ms. Wilson?
So I, I, you know, you made a good point that we are starting these things back up. And so, yes, we are starting our subcommittees back up, and it is gonna take some time, and I'm gonna take ownership for the, as, you know, the, the, you know, chair of the, you know, policy subcommittee, that yes, maybe they aren't coming back as timely, but we've started the process. And we need to recognize the fact that we've started looking at policies, and it may be taking longer than we want, but at least we're there, doing the work, we're having meetings, we're reviewing them, and so I think we should be, while, yes, it's taking longer, right? But how, how long has it been since we've had a policy come before this board to actually review? So it's taking longer, but we're getting there, and so I, I, I just think we also need to recognize that we are, there are subcommittees that are meeting and that are doing work. It may not be as quickly as we want, but they are getting work done.
So the thing is, I meant the process of it being posted, and then some people adding their changes, then, okay, so was it posted? Well, we don't know. Were there changes? When is it coming back? Are you gonna review it? All right, you know, it's that, and then you have to get, bring it up to the commissioner, if I'm not mistaken, and say, hey, these are the recommendations, correct? So, Ms. Tensley-Williams?
Mr. Soto, um, would it help if, because we're down teachers, right? We're down on quite a bit of teachers that left, right?
We have some vacancies, but not based on people leaving or anything like that.
Now, that would help, I mean, if we got teachers, maybe get them back. That would help the kids, that would help the students, because they have to get up to snuff. And so we, we really need teachers, and that would help, okay? So maybe we need to get on the recruiting.
And I, yeah, I think that would definitely help. I think one of the major challenges that we have is staffing market right now. I think we have a, a strong strategic plan, we have strong benchmarks. We have a strong budget process, which we'll get into, that's aligned to that plan, and one of the biggest challenges that we're faced with having staff to be able to implement that. And on the policy, I, I agree with you, like, I had, uh, created a worksheet of Garcia to track every single policy that has been, has been worked on by the subcommittee. What the status is all the way through the end, as a tool to be able to manage where we're at, which ones have been posted, which ones are in review by the subcommittee, which ones are in review by the receiver, and which ones are gonna be going back to the So i- it's a pretty neat tool to be able to organize this, and I think that, uh, Ms. Wilson has been doing an incredible job with that committee. So much so that, um, I had to tell her last time, like, we need to be a little bit more realistic about how many policies. Like, I'm not gonna just sit here and say, yeah, we're just gonna approve all of them, like, if you really wanna wa- want us to go through a process of due diligence, and it's gonna take some, some time, each individual policy to review it in detail and make sure that, that, um, that we're, you know, we're doing it, so. Especially, you know, there's, there's some that, that, you know, MASC must have, might have as, as like a good template, that's not necessarily consistent with what actually happening and what we've worked with the city on. Like, I want to make sure that we have enough time to do that, but I think this tracker is gonna be a really good tracker, and I just want to reiterate, you've been doing an incredible job with that subcommittee, and I appreciate all the hard work that went into it.
I agree she does.
Ms. Rivera Cologne?
Just gonna say it one more time. Thank you so much for all the work that you have been doing, Ms. Wilson. I think that we all have grievances with what receivership is. The lack of plans, the way that it was put together. I don't think that if this has been, if this had been done by an educator, it would have looked very differently. Because you would have attainable goals, you would have had the right data, and you would have had an end goal, because people have exams so that we get tested all the time, but at least there's some end goal, this is what you're trying to get. And we don't have any of that, and as much as we hate it, we can't change that part of it. What are our next steps? What are things that we can actually do? Do we, are we, are we writing a letter? Are we making a call? Are we going to the commissioner and knocking on the door? What, what are the things that we can do to actually get their attention and really tell them, hey, come here? We wanna have these conversations, we have beautiful updates from all the different quarters, this is what our numbers look like. When are we getting out? What are this benchmark? And like Ms. LaFave was saying, the goalpost can't change. They can't keep moving the goalpost if we attain something, oh, now you have to get this, now you have to do that, right? And of course, this is all spoken in basically guessing, right? Because it's not that we heard that from them right now, we don't know. And that has been the issue, we don't know, and we continue to be left in the dark with maybe one flashlight, if we count Mr. Soto, but we only get to see very little spots. We don't get to see the whole picture. How are we serving our students better? How do we move next steps? What are the things that we need to do in order to do that?
Alrighty, I'm gonna move on to the next thing. Like I said, this is something that I just wanna keep on as we strive to get out of receivership. The next thing I need is a motion to choose a delegate and an alternate delegate to the delegate assembly for the MASC conference, which is scheduled from November eighth through November tenth.
Make a motion.
Okay, so I have Ms. Tensley-Williams?
Second.
Motion for, for what? Oh, you gotta pick a person. I'm gonna have Ms. Brunel, go ahead.
Well, I just wanted to ask before we vote to see if anybody wants to be the delegates. Because often we just randomly choose somebody, and I just want to know if there's anybody who wants the experience or wants to be a delegate before we just randomly choose people to be the delegates.
So just so everybody knows, it's being held in Cape Cod, November, November eighth through the tenth. Tentatively, right now to the tenth, there may be a Saturday morning session, we're not sure, we're still in the talks of it. Um, so, um, um, we, I would also, but we gotta have a delegate and the alternate, and both have to, have to go um, and attend, um, so, okay, I, Mr. Wallahan?
I'll nominate Mrs., Ms. Cologne.
For what?
The de- delegate.
So delegate.
Head cheese.
Yadi Let Rivera Cologne, and who's the alternate?
Mr. Wallahan.
You're going, Mr. Wallahan? Ms. Wilson, I know that you participated in it last, last year.
Yes, I did. It was quite enjoyable.
Were you going again this year?
If I am nominated, I will go.
Alternate delegate, anybody?
No, 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 Jay. No, please, allow, please, check your calendar.
I've been going along for many, many years, and I really, really feel, so, we have to and, and I'm gonna stay young.
Thank you.
New blood, new blood going down there to learn. It's a, it's a really learning experience and a wonderful experience down there at a convention.
I agree.
Whether it be state convention or the national convention, you learn so much. We need to bring it back to the city.
Okay, I'm also gonna be checking in with Mr. Kuchar, um, because on what the date is gonna be. Um, because I would like the committee to be over there for the night that I, that they do the passing of the presidency. Even though I wouldn't take presidency until January first, but it happens over there after the delegate assembly um, approves the appointment, um, for president. So I'm hoping that I can see everybody over there, um, to head over there. Mr. Kennedy, you need to speak with your mom about that.
Road trip.
Road trip, um, but I will.
As long as he's missing ANET testing, he's happy to go.
Okay.
More than happy.
But again, I will keep everybody up to date on the dates for that. But those that are chosen as delegate and as, and alternate delegate, they're typically there throughout the entire conference, and they're attending the different sessions, um, that are offered and the general sessions, and that's where you get your professional development and sort of networking from. So, is, who's the alternate? Yes, Mr. Romero. Okay. Okay.
I didn't hear that.
He says if, if, if anybody, then he's willing to volunteer to, to also be the alternate. Um, so, I just need, I have to write my paper up. I have my book with me here so I can fax our decision, so I so, okay, so right now, let's do this. We have, um,
Jody.
We have a motion to have Ms. Yadi Let Rivera Cologne serve as the delegate to the delegate assembly.
Yes.
At the MASC conference. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
And, yeah, there was a second.
Was a second.
There was a second. Um, any opposed? Any abstained? Okay. So that motion passes unanimously, so, Mr. Rivera Cologne, you are the delegate.
Bravo.
Now, in the case of that you can't make it, or something happens, or you show up and then something else hap- Now, in the case of that you can't make it or something happens or you show up and then something else hap- you never know. That's why we choose an alternate delegate. Y'all need to decide and give me a motion. Go ahead, Mr. Colomore. Then I have, for, okay. I think y'all are gonna kill me at an early young age. Okay, I have Ms. Eleanor Wilson as the, oh, we have a motion for Eleanor Wilson to be the alternate. To the delegate assembly, is there a second? Okay, Ms. Tensley Williams, I will say something right after this, don't worry, trust me when I tell you. All those in favor?
I wanted a discussion on that.
You want, okay, discussion.
I want a discussion on that because I've had the, I've had the opportunity to go. Um, and I would, I would really, you know, love someone who has not gone, um, to be able to go and we do have someone. Who put his name forth to attend and I feel as though that that person should be recognized if they wanna go and have that opportunity.
The reason why I said that is because I was gonna be talking with Glenn, how many people we can get from Holyoke to go. And being that we're a district in receivership, it's all about supporting. So with that being said. You see, there's always a way for me to work around the cause, so I was gonna see. Who else would like to be attending so that, um, I can reach out to M A S C and see what we can do?
I'd like to go cuz when I was the delegate, it was COVID, so I, I did it all at home, so I didn't get to experience it. So I don't wanna be like the official alternate, but like if more of us can go. Yeah, it's a working opportunities, so.
Alright, so then we have Ms. Brunel that would like to go, Mr. Romero that would like to go. Mr. Colomore, did you wanna attend as well?
I might go, but.
Okay.
I would tend to, that's it.
As the time comes, and Mr. Wallahan? You can't attend that week? Eric Garcia? Can't attend that week, okay, so then we've got practically almost the entire, the entire board minus two. Alright, so I need the alternate, so Ms. Wilson is dropping out of that.
I would like to, yes.
So.
I would like to make a motion that we elect Gustavo Romero as the alternate delegate to the twenty twenty-three assembly.
Is there a second?
Yes.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye? Any opposed? Okay, no abstents, okay, so that passed, so Mr. Romero, congratulations. I real quickly revamp of subcommittees, I heard what Mr. Wallahan said, his concerns about the number of people that are currently on the subcommittee. So I'm gonna be looking at the subcommittees, who's in what, so you're gonna be assigned extra committees. Um, to have more people on it, you understand what I mean? So, like, you have three, right, Ms. Wilson, you have. Uh, Yadi Let? Oh, you have, so it's four for you. You guys have three because that's all you're allowed. For a joint. There's three reps, no, I'm not gonna put you on anymore.
Including myself, there are four on the policy subcommittee.
On the policies, and the finance, how many do you have, Mr. Wallahan? How, how did you get five? Okay, I must have, might have taken some Tylenol that day. And I was a little bit off, but I do not remember that. Okay, so then I need you guys to send me an updated list of who's specifically on yours, um, I don't know about the diversity, equity and inclusion, but. You just send me specifically who's on yours, I know definitely for policy, I know who's on that one and I know about your joint. Mr. Wallahan, just send me yours. Alrighty, well, that sounds great. Graduation invitation for all school committee members, please let Sam know if you need a robe. Also, let her know who's going, let me know who's going, um. I wanna make sure that everybody's where they need to be and make sure you are on time. So graduation is at twelve for D, for Holyoke High School North, I suggest you be there, what, like eleven?
About a half hour.
Eleven thirty? So that way you can get parking and get, be already in there by eleven thirty. Um, the graduation for Dean, you said five thirty?
Yes.
I believe so, I can just double check if he's.
Okay. Please try to be here, like, what, quarter or five, five, so that way you can find parking, um, because you're more than likely gonna have to park over there and come back this way. Okay? Now, we move on to superintendent receiver reports.
Alright, not a show, it's a presentation. Um, Sam, if we could get the slide deck up. Everybody has, um. Everybody has the, a copy of the presentation in front of them. Um, and we're gonna be putting it up, so today, uh, I'd like to just. Show you where we're at in the process, which we've, we've been able to balance the general fund budget. Um, and, uh, that one's the panorama one. Um, and there's, uh, there is a, a lot of detail here, so. I would like to kinda skim through some of these because a lot of the strategic priority ones and. And the high level ones were discussed in detail at the last finance subcommittee meeting. But I wanted to make sure that the full committee had a, a copy of the, of, of, of all that information. But I'm not gonna be going line by line, something new that we've implemented this year. Um, in an attempt to provide more details than ever have at, at this point in the process. Is you have a, a, a summary of significant changes by, by our, each of our department heads. Um, and that's gonna be in there and I tried, I, I created a narrative explaining a lot of the differences. Um, what I will say is that overall, um, those numbers aren't gonna change, but between cost centers. Our, our finance team is still in the process of scrubbing through some of the data. Making sure, I, I'll give you an example when we get to the academics, um, department. Of, an example of something that I picked up on today, that before we go to print the big budget book. Um, you know, we're gonna work through, scrubbing through some of those details and making some changes, but overall, each cost center. Or each chief budget is not gonna change, um, it's just some of the things that, um. Some of the things, uh, may change and I'll be sure to come back and, and give you any of those that have changed in a, in a, in a summary of. Of why they changed, so. I think one of the things that I wanna reinforce here, I gotta turn this on first. One of the things that I wanna reinforce here is that, um, our budget is a, a decentralized. Budget process, so we have, we work with each of our department heads and especially this year. Um, when we have ESSER, SOA going up and ESSER. You know, for the most part going away after next year, um, we're slowly looking to make sure that. You know, I've, I've, I've told all of you this, the way we're using ESSER money is. To accelerate some of the things that we know we need to do and implement with the Student Opportunity Act. So, um, we've done that and little by little, uh, or not little by little, but over this year and next year, you'll see. A lot of things that we have funded on those, on that S, on the ESSER. Um, moving to the general fund, so you see some, some increases there, but that's expected. We made those investments two or three years ago because we knew, like, the, this is the appropriate staffing level for counselors. For academic intervention teachers, for coaches, P L L teachers, for special education teachers. We don't have money on the general fund do it, to do it, but we're going to spend our ESSER money on that and little by little. Move those things to the general fund and that's been our strategy. But I wanna, like, I think one thing you'll hear me say a couple of times or a few times throughout this presentation. Is that everything we do is, is tied to, to this strategic plan. Um, and our, you know, between our vision, our mission and our core beliefs, even the budget development process. Everything is, is aligned and, and not completely disconnected. From, from the hard work that this community did to create all the components in our strategic plan, our learner profile. And for us to live out our equity commitments, um. You all know that as part of our strategic planning process, we, we laid out these five priorities. And it, you know, in, in the presentation, there's a memo from, from me to, uh, you, the school committee and the community. That outlines that, you know, throughout the entire budget process, all of our. Um, you know, we made specific investments in these priority areas and we will continue to, to do so. Those are early literacy, um, and, uh, learning experiences, inclusion, whole child and educator development. So this is what, kinda what I opened up with, like, we made significant investments. But, uh, I don't know if many of you know this, but I wanna reiterate, when the pandemic hit us. In two thousand and nineteen. We didn't get our, our true budget until the middle of the year and when we did get it, there was a cut by general fund. And, uh, they didn't, they were, they were supposed to implement the Student Opportunity Act and they didn't implement it that year because the pandemic hit. Um, but what they did instead was like, that's okay, you didn't get Student Opportunity Act, but here's all this ESSER money. And in the process, we ac- we actually had to move all of our counselors to ESSER. Like, we didn't have enough general fund money to even afford one counselor. So as part of that, we knew we needed counselors, so now what we're, you know, we made a commitment, okay, we got this ESSER money, we're gonna keep our counseling position. And in fact, we're gonna expand on them and over time, we've been moving those positions back to the general fund. We made investments in academic intervention teachers, we made investments in expert teachers, we made investments in English language learner teachers. And we've, we definitely invested a significant amount in capital improvements to help with our air quality. You know, um, one of the, one of the things that was really important to the mayor as well is, is things like curb appeal, when kids walk into the school, how they feel. Made a lot of investments in that through, through ESSER funding. And the one thing that, you know, one thing that we did through our partnership with Relay, we committed. We need our principals and our assistant principals to focus on instruction, need them to be laser focused on instruction. And two years ago, we said, in order to help them achieve that, we're gonna invest in these deans of management and ops. To take off some of that work that isn't really instruction driven, um, and. We're still committed to investing in those positions next year, we, when ESSER goes away after next year. Those, those position, you know, we, we, we've been real clear with principals that we might not be able to. But those aren't positions that we, we might absorb into the general fund. If we have enough Student Opportunity Act money, great, I would love it, I think the principals and the assistant principals really appreciate having. The, these positions in place so that they can, they can actually focus on instruction. But it is, it, it's a nice to have, not a, not a, a need to have at this point. And we've been really clear that that was a three-year investment that we were gonna make and this, this budget includes, uh, making sure that we can do that. For another year.
I have a question.
Ms. Wilson?
And I just wanna make sure that those individuals filling this role know it was a three-year investment.
Yeah, I, I, we've been, you know, it's not, it's not anything we've been hiding and I, and I'm not sitting here saying that they're gonna get cut.
No, I'm not saying that either, but I just wanna make sure that they realize, like, it's like a grant funded in some way. From the standpoint of if there's no funds, that position could go away.
Everyone who has, is in this role has heard that.
Okay.
Pretty loud and clear.
Thank you.
I gotta, I gotta work, work, see where I'm at, okay, so. Um, those were the investments and then, uh, just the high level summary overview of the revenue, we did. We did see an increase of seven point seven percent on the general fund, which is about seven point eight million. Um, and that's just implementation of the Student Opportunity Act, we are in year three of that and, um. We'll see these steady increases, um, through the, through the year of twenty twenty-seven. Um, there was a slight decrease in charter school tuition and there was definitely an increase in, in transportation. We talked about, you know, last year, I was looking at the presentation that we presented to the school committee, this was something we talked about in detail last year. Um, thank, thankfully, the city council allowed us to extend our existing contracts. Cause I, I predicted this two years ago, we are gonna see drastic increases in our rates at transportation. And they allowed us to negotiate extending the three-year contract to five-year. This is the year that we had to rebid, um, and we saw the increases in rates, um, actually less than, than what I had expected. I did some, you know, I just called some colleagues across the state. Two years ago, asking, you know, what increases they were getting, some of them were getting seventeen percent, twenty percent. Fifteen percent increases in transportation and, you know, for next year. Which we would have gotten that two years ago, so this is actually a savings of millions of dollars to the city. But I could understand where, you know, um, especially when, when you're looking year to year. This, this is probably gonna be a, a. Pretty significant conversation with our city counselors. And this will be the last year of COVID relief funds, um, after. Uh, September thirtieth of next school year, not, not next school year, the following. So as I said, transportation has gone up and I, the reason I, I kinda put a spotlight on this is because I know it's gonna be talked about. I know it's gonna be, it's usually a topic of conversation, leases, adult. Because it's going up so much, um, something that's gonna, that, um, that we're gonna talk about extensively at city council. But I want everybody to know, like, it's not because of, uh, you know, any mismanagement or any attempt for us. Us to, uh, save money, we've done a lot over the last couple of years to do that, including that move. That I talked about in extending the contract. Um, two years ago. I get some help here, Sam? Um, the other thing we did is when we went out to bid this year, we saw the increases and we said, whoa, like, this is. Crazy, this is insane, we expected it, but we went out and asked all the vendors, like, why these increases? What, what, is there anything in the bid that was driving these increases up? And they gave us some good feedback on like, well, part of the reason is the age of your fleet. And the other part of the reason is X, Y, Z, so we actually declined the bid and went back out to bid. And adjusted our bid specs to see if we can get better rates and that resulted in almost a half a million dollar savings. Um, had we not done that, so, um, I, we, we, we're really, really thinking outside the box and trying to be. Good financial stewards of the city and this was something that. We worked with the city's procurement office and it resulted in a, in a pretty good, uh, sizable decrease from what it would have been. Had we just awarded it to the lowest bidder first time we went out to bid.
Ms. Tensley Williams?
We get a hundred and twenty-three million, but we have to use a hundred and nine of that by June thirtieth, right?
I'm not.
Of the budget. Um, because I thought the other day we said that, I thought.
I'm not sure, is it something in the packet in here?
Right, um, I think we talked about it, but I just wanted to reiterate it, but if it's wrong, I.
I, I don't know that it's wrong, I just don't know what numbers you're referencing in here, I do know that, like. We have to meet our net school spending minimum requirement. Okay. Okay, so yeah, there, there is a portion of our budget that is supposed to go towards instructional expenses. That's called net school spending and then. That's called net school spending. And then there's a portion of our budget that is on top of that. So, um, you know, that is transportation, adult education and any leases that are greater than three years old. Um, and then, and then any capital improvement, so. Uh, those are the four things that are most common in terms of Holyoke school budgets that, um. That are actually not part of net school spending.
Just trying to understand it a little bit better, thank you.
Yeah, no, I appreciate your question.
Mr. Collmore.
Yes, yeah, there are clauses in the contract on both ends. So if they go way up, we might owe them some money. If they go way down, they might owe us some money. Um, in addition to what we just did this year, there's been a lot of things, I don't know if you guys remember, but. We had bus drivers, like, picketing outside of city council. City council asked Dr. Zright at the time, need to cut transportation. I came up with a proposal that would do that. It was a proposal that probably would have saved a million dollars a year for the city. Um, and because of that political pressure, they essentially told me, no, you can't do that. But in the process, we switched some of our mini buses to vans. Because, and it, and it saved, you know, it saved a ton of money over the last four or five years. Um, so there was still potential to do more, but at that time, you know. I don't think the city council was prepared to, or I'm not saying they weren't prepared, but like. You know, with, with the pressure that was applied, it wasn't a decision that they were willing to, to live with at the time. Um, we've changed school start times. I know for, for years, uh, I had. You know, heated debates with, with our good friend Dr. Mahoney over there about adjusting the high school start time because we could save. Significant amount of money if we could tier some of their buses and, um, all the way up until I became superintendent. We couldn't do that and then, uh, we made it work after that, right, Dr. Mahoney? But that, you know, I, I think the point I'm trying to make here is that we haven't been sitting, doing nothing to try to save money on transportation. Over the last five years, we've done a lot and despite all that work, I know that this is still gonna be a hot topic when we go to city council.
Ms. Brunel.
I'm gonna ask both this on the side, do you know when you're going to council?
Um, I know they get their budget, uh, I think after the state of the address that the mayor is doing on, on tomorrow night. Um, the city council will then start scheduling meetings with department heads, so we're at, you know, depending on when they call us in.
Okay, I just, I had mentioned it to Mickey and we just might want to be after they vote on. You know, they're not gonna like. Don't want that front of mind when they go to approve.
Yeah, I mean, I would hope that this doesn't get tied to that, but I. They're two completely different things.
Completely different things, but money is money.
This is one of Sam's probab- Sam's pet peeve, next slide, please. Um, so I did, I did wanna. I did wanna, uh, state that, you know, just, we already talked about this, the Student Opportunity Act. The next slide really, really shows a visual of, of the impact of that. Um, so you could see for, I mean, this goes back even further than two thousand and thirteen. Our costs had been going way up, but our revenue was pretty flat. And then, when they implemented the Student Opportunity Act, you can see over the course of six years, we will see increases. Which means we, we're finally able to afford more counselors, to afford more ELL. More academic intervention teachers, like, all those things that other communities benefit from because they're funded above net school spending. We weren't, we were tied really to whatever the state was giving us. And now we're getting more money and we can do all those great things that, that we know are gonna help support our students. Um, you know, I, I think, you know, I'm really proud of the work. I'm really proud of how we invested this money, which is like, we know this money's coming, we have ESER money, let's not wait for it to come, let's do that stuff now to get a head start on it. Um, but that's what it looks like. And then after year six, then it'll go up by inflation. Um, depending on inflation, but I think, um, you know, that, that was a really good move by the, by, by the legislators. To, to recognize that communities like Holyoke have been struggling for many, 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 many years. Um, in terms of, of revenue being flat.
Mr. Kennedy?
Um, sorry, I think I heard this correctly, but are you using part of the ESER money to increase like counseling in schools? Is that what you were saying?
We have, so, uh, I mentioned it earlier, like, when, when we got the cut that we got in twenty nineteen on the general fund. We didn't, we didn't even have money for one counselor, so like, we, we had to move all of our counselors to, um, to ESER. And then most recently, in the K to eights, we, we created a staffing model for, for counselors. We said, based on these IEP caseloads and based on this number of students, this is the appropriate staffing level. For counseling positions and that resulted in an increase in overall counselors at the district. The next phase, like, I think the toughest thing that we're faced with, and it's gonna be in my wrap-up slide, is we need to do the same thing for our high schools. Who are heavily relying on ESER money to balance their budget and to do things. Just like we, as part of our rezoning, we looked at elementary and middle schools, what the appropriate staffing levels need to be. Need to do that same work over the next six months with our high schools.
Okay, so what happens if, like, this projection is inaccurate and the ESER money goes away? Will there be any threat of cutting those increased counselors? Cause like, especially now, it's very important to have the proper amount of counselors in schools. And even now, they're stretched thin.
Yeah, that's a great question. Um, there's gonna have to be some deep discussion around, you know, what we can afford, what we have out there and, and. Uh, Mr. Kennedy, you weren't here, but like, for the last, I've been a CFO for. I was a CFO for five years and a budget director for ten years. Um, and every year that I was in that role, we had to go through a process of telling schools, like, here's how much you have, what are you gonna cut from that? And every year they had to cut and, you know, I've been in rooms where, you know, uh, in, both in Springfield and in Holyoke where. There were tiers and there were like really, really tough decisions because, um, because of how, um. How decentralized our budget is, we, we were putting a lot on our principals to make decisions on how they're gonna allocate their resources. And oftentimes it led to, like, oh, I don't have enough money and I'm going to have to cut this position or that position or these supplies or that. Um, so we're, you know, I hope we don't, you know, I hope that Student Opportunity Act is enough to absorb. The core things that were on that first slide, the counseling position, the coaching position. The, the appropriate, um, levels for, for intervention and coaching. Um, all of those things that were on the previous slide, I hope that's enough. But if it's not enough, then we, we might have to revert to like, okay, what do we have, where are we at and where do we think we can? You know, where do we think we need to reduce? Good question. On the next slide, um. We have our city budget and this, this is actually not the, the city budget. This is our projected budget by major categories, so you can see total revenue at the top. Net school spending, the things above net school spending. And then our, our major buckets of, of, of expenses, our categories, so. See salaries going up ten percent, we invested a significant amount of money. Um, does anybody need my, do they have a copy? You could see salaries going up by five point seven million dollars. That's based on our new, you know, we did implement a new, uh. A new compensation model for teachers, which resulted in an increase in ten percent, but also included in this. Is some positions being absorbed from ESER into the general fund. And I know it's small and hard to see, but those are, are, are big categories. The other thing I would highlight. You see the, the, the increase in transportation and you see the increase in out-of-district tuition. Out-of-district tuition is, you know, uh, it's, it's a, a lot. And this, you know, the states just set their rates and we're gonna see an increase of fourteen percent just in the rates themselves. Let alone, you know, the, you know, enrollment, whatever that happens with that enrollment, but. It is something we're closely monitoring and we hope that there's some relief on the way, but right now, that's what we need to hold in the budget. For the one hundred and fifteen students that, um, that are in out-of-district placements. The next slide is, um, so that was a, a high level summary of where our money's going. This is what, 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 how we get to the net school spending appropriation. So we get one eleven, the one oh nine from chapter seventy. We give some money to the city for their, um, admin costs, you know, the, the, the. Their procurement office supports us, their treasurer's office supports us. And so that, you know, off the top, a hundred and forty-eight thousand goes towards that. Um, and then we add charter reimbursement and then all the things that are above net school spending, transportation, crossing guards. Um, and leases greater than three years old to, to get to that one twenty-two. And then, once we get to that one twenty-two, the city takes money from us for, for our employees. For health insurance and retirement costs. So they don't show up in our appropriation because they show, the city has those budgeted in a separate account. And we work with the, the city to make sure the school department is paying their fair share of those costs. Then the last city budget slide is, is on the next page. Um, that's what you see in the city's budget book. So there's a lot in our budget book. We do, we try to tell a story of like, how, like, this is where our resources are going. And in the city's budget book, it's just two lines, here's what salaries is, here's what expenses are. But I wanted to make sure that the community and this body is, um, is, is, um, up to date. On why those two numbers are different. The main reason is because of the, those real big expenses for insurance and retirement. Show in the one twenty-two, but really in the city's budget, you don't see that because it's in another page in their budget book. Um, next slide is on budget assumptions. Um, I'm not gonna read through all of these, but. You know, we, we, we're using the houseways and means budget, um, and, and there's a lot of assumptions that went into. The numbers that you see in front of you and I think the biggest thing that could change or impact these numbers is. When the state finally releases their budget in July, we could see a, a change in our charter reimbursement, our charter assessments. We could see a change in circuit breaker. And unlike other communities where they're like, eh, okay, whatever, the state changed their numbers. Like, we rely heavily on what happens with the state numbers because we're funded at net school spend. Budget overview. Next slide, there you go. Um, as, you know, I think a lot of this was, we went through at the finance subcommittee. So I just want to go through it briefly. Everyone's aware that most of our funding comes from the state. Eighty-eight percent of it versus what comes from local taxes, which own, which is only eleven point four. Um, and, you know, because of our, you know, because of the state formula. We're heavily reliant on, 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 on state aid. You can see here that on the next slide, it, it's a really good visual of, of how reliant we are on state aid. And that's a coin on the next slide at. You could see that big slice of our budget is state aid. And then the smaller pie that looks like a slice of pizza, um, is the local funds. So what we get from, from local tax. And the next slide, it, it shows where we're at relative to, um, other communities. You can see we're third on the list in terms of how much the local taxes goes into the budget versus how much state aid is. Lawrence is at the top, you know, only four point nine percent of their budget comes from the city's local taxes. Uh, Springfield's number two at nine point one and Holyoke is number three and it's all based on, you know, uh, the, the, the. Chapter seventy and required foundation budget rel- relative to the required net school spending. This is a memo, I'm not gonna read it word for word, but if, uh, you're bored later and you want to read it, I think. This is where I said I'm gonna say this a few times, like, our entire budget process is, is directly tied to the priorities identified. In, in our strategic planning, which was developed by. Here's our budget distribution and I think this is what's, this is something new that we've, we haven't come to you before at this point in time. And, uh, in an effort to, I've heard loud and clear, like, we want to see more details. This entire section are those details that, that, you know, my attempt to give you more details than what you've seen in the past. At this point in the process. Go to the next slide. This is how our budget is organized into our different, you know, chiefs or cost centers. We have academics and school leadership, we have finance and strategy, which was combined this year, human resources. Our operations and technology, our pupil services budget, which a lot of those expenses are actually out at the schools. But, uh, managed centrally by our pupil services department, um, like itinerant service providers and things like that. And then I combined superintendent, school committee and family engagement because they were so, were small. Um, for purposes of this presentation, those things are combined and, but the, the next two slides. We're gonna go into each of those, um, each of those cost centers and just hide, break them down even further. Um. So I would say. We can skip to slide thirty. Here is the first con- cost center, which is academics and school leadership. You can see what percentage here is part of the general academics budget versus art versus early education versus. LA humanities, ELL, extended learning. I want to be clear, like, that doesn't mean that, for example, phys ed is only. One point two percent, that doesn't count our phys ed teachers or i- it just counts what's managed centrally by. By the department here, so it could be curriculum, it could be supplies, things like that, so, um. The, a lot of these things, like, for example, ELL, if we were to, we were to. We're gonna tally up all of our ELL teachers, which are not included in this number, that number would be much greater. The first slide I showed you showed that the majority of the, of the pie is in schools. And that's where, like, school-based staffing in there, not in this centrally located budget. Um, the next slide has the, the dollar amounts associated to these and you can see some differences. And I told you earlier that the total in this category isn't gonna change, the two point nine million last year. And the three point two million next year, those aren't gonna change, but as I was reviewing this even before I came here. I noticed that if you look at science, for example, it looks like science is getting cut drastically. But the reality is, is that a hundred thousand dollars of, um, that we had in our budget. For our, for our, um, director of science, which was included in the previous year. Is actually moved up to the academics cost center and throughout the prop, throughout, from now to, to June and we build our budget book. We're gonna see things like that and fix them. Our science director doesn't belong in that cost center up top in academics. It belongs in the science cost center, so. That's an example of like, when we do the budget book, you might see a change like that, but I, I promise, I commit that. Any changes that we do make to these numbers, I'll share, I'll share with all of you. And then the next slide goes into detail on what all the changes are. Um, so it's very wordy, I do expect some of you, I'm not gonna sit here and read everything, I do expect some of you. To, you know, at, go home or whatever. Uh, and, and whether you have questions or not, but I do wanna highlight, um, some, some key big changes. Um, you can see that. We moved from, you know, we have been talking about moving from a system of autonomous schools to a school system. And in that process, we have talked about making sure we have consistent curriculum across. As opposed to what it used to be was, here's schools, here's a bunch of money. And you guys decide what you're gonna do with it, and in some cases that meant what assessment, what curriculum, things like that. Over the last couple of years, I've been telling everybody, we're moving away from a system of autonomous schools. School system, and in that process, we, we wanna see consistent curriculum. In our elementary schools, in our middle schools, and even in our high school. And as part of that process, we, we had to claw back, like. We, we, we were really clear with principals, like, these are your staffing allocations and this is what you have discretion over. Um, and I think generally speaking, all the principals have said, thank you, Anthony, this process. Has been so much better, cuz now I don't have to think about whether I want a counselor, or whether I want an office clerk. Or whether I want, uh, an assistant principal, I don't have to make those tough decisions, cuz you guys did that for us. And now the extra money that I have that I actually have autonomy over. I don't have to worry about curriculum or this or that, like, so you're gonna see over, you know, especially with Esser going away. These things. Changes that aren't, aren't typical, like, because of the nature of that, both moving to a school system and. Moving stuff off of Esser and into the general fund. But here are some, some real high level.
Ms. Tensley Williams?
Um, so you saying that when the money was put in, it was used for what it was supposed to be used for? Otherwise, maybe, you know, maybe it wasn't, not saying that, but it could have been used for things that it should not have been used for. But that's.
Not that it couldn't, I mean, I think all of our principals put their best foot forward and think, and what, what they think best for kids at the time. It's just a different, a different model. I think the system of autonomous schools model, I think is a, a charter model. Charter schools like just get money and then they can do whatever they want with it. And I think that, that model works if you. Could work. Had the right people in place that can make decisions on how to. How to be a budget manager and allocate resources. Generally speaking, we, we said, you know what, there's things that we don't want you to think about principals. We don't wanna think, we don't want you to think about whether or not you have office clerk. Right. Or a family engagement person, or if you have enough money to purchase curriculum, we're gonna take care of all those, uh, of all those things. And, and you don't have to worry about that. And that's really what I'm saying, like decentralized budgets. You'll see they look a little different than last year, but it's the primary reason that shift.
Doing a good job, so. Hope it good work.
Ms. Wilson?
I just have a question about the academic team, you said it's a completely new team with a new leader. Are they new to the district or they've just been moved to these positions?
They're not new to the district, so our director of E L A used to be the assistant principal at PEC. Um, we have an expert teacher leading our, our, um, early, our. Early literacy initiative. Um, we have, you know, Rebecca Thompson is now the executive director of academics that Valerie Aneer. She used to be the principal at McMahon. I think that, you know, it's one of those things that I'm really proud of, of, of this. This leadership team. We've focused so much, and I think, you know, Dr. Mahoney is doing an incredible job. Fixing academics. Part of that is, like, he did a new team with a different mindset. And, and like, he's really brought that, that lens of like, we're here to support principals and we're here to work. We're gonna work really hard, and he's went out and got people that are willing to do all of those things that I just said. Um, but I think that, uh, what we've invested in, in terms of, of building our leadership teams. Through, through our, the investment with Barr, is it's created, it's created a pipeline of really, really strong leaders. So like, we didn't have that before, like, we, and I'm not saying, I'm not saying anything about anybody. But oftentimes when a principal role opened up, we would be looking outside of Holyoke to fill a principal role. And right now I can tell you, there are. At least two of our assistant principals, and if we, if we had a vacancy, they're ready. They're ready to roll, they're ready to take on that leadership and they're ready to do a good job. And similar, you know, our expert teachers have been a part of that process as well. You know, they're ready to step into, you know, the executive director of academics or to lead our E L A work, things like that, so. We didn't have to go, um, correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Mahoney, most of the academic team, they've been, they, they were already here, right? Yeah, hundred percent.
A follow-up question, I don't see anything about, um, dean or about. Um, I see all this focus, but I don't see anything focused on vocational education.
Yeah, I mean, that is on. We don't have, what, what we had for schools is on slide twenty-seven, so we didn't go and break down. What school. Um, you know, how much Metcalf is getting, how much Dean is getting. Um, how much Holyoke High is getting, we didn't break that level of detail down, if that's something. If that's a report that you'd like to see, I'd, I'd be happy to share it.
I, I'd like to see the funding for dean, um. You know, cuz we see funding for art, early education, and I think we should be looking at that funding for dean as well.
Yeah, I mean, but you don't see funding for PEC, you don't see funding for Holyoke High, you don't.
Right, but there's a whole vocational side of things, and I don't see funding that's earmarked for our vocational students. And our programming, and that's something I would like to see.
Okay. Just dean, or do you? Okay.
Vocational.
Okay. You can share that for sure.
I just feel like we've been stressing a lot about academics and I just wanna make sure we're. You know, I would like to overview the funding at that, for that school.
Be happy to provide that, Ms. Wilson.
Thank you.
Yes, anything that I give, yes, I will. Chair and vice chair, I will share that with. And our, our finance. So, um, yeah, just to recap, there's, there's explanations in here, like, early education looks like it's going down. But that's because we had a grant that was going away last year, so we funded some pre-K programs on the general fund. We since got that grant, so like, we didn't have to carry it on the general fund, it's now carried on a grant, but it doesn't mean we made cuts to early education. And you'll see a lot of that throughout here, but there's an explanation to every, every, um, major change you could see. On slide thirty-two. Which is also, you have a hard copy in front of you. Um, finance and strategy, you could see, um, on the next slide, the majority of, of finance and strategy. Uh, is transportation, so there are a few cost centers here, the business office, the communications department, the enrollment center. And then the big huge slice of the pie, which is transportation. Um, and that represents about eighty-four percent of, of that. Of that budget. Then the next slide, you can see. You know, the, the, the actual numbers tied to these. And on the next slide, an explanation to any of the major shifts. I know that there were some things that we had. Example, uh, uh, in the communications budget is there were some things that were housed in the. You know, one of the, one of the major shifts that we've made, and you'll see it throughout, there were some things that were in the technology budget. That we took out of the technology budget, so when we get to that section, you'll see a decrease, and we put it where it belongs, so if it was a. A software platform for the communications department, instead of embedding that into technology, we put it in the communications department. But we, we did definitely increase, um. Uh, uh, we added a translator position onto the general fund. That is, that has been. Um, a struggle, you know, we're, we're really struggling to keep up with the demand. Of translating our I E P on time, we wanna make sure that our families have access. And one thing, it is one thing that I feel we're doing better than any other community in the state. Biding language access. So, in order to keep up with the demand, we had to add a translator position. Uh, we already talked about, uh, transportation. And, uh, one thing I wanted to highlight here is that we are reducing F T Es in that cost center as well. And that's primarily due to our work with, with the city to create efficiency, so. We had an entire position, because we have two separate munis systems. We had an entire position dedicated to taking our munis information. Putting it into a format that the city wants, and then them entering it into their munis system. And we created a process where like, how can we automate this so we don't have to do all that work, and in the process it led to us. Being able to reduce a position. And I will say, included in this is, is. Still another, see, uh, it, our CFO position, which we've recently combined. Um, so we're, you know, it's, it's held there in the budget right now, but we, you know, we need to work through how that transition is gonna. Impact the actual budget, but it could even be less next year when we present it to you. Cuz I know we're down another position that we're holding in the budget, till we figure out what the right staffing is for our new model. Um, operations and technology is exactly that, it's operations and technology, and you can see. On slide twenty, you can see the breakdown between operations and technology. And, um, that is on slide thirty-seven. No changes in F T. On slide thirty-seven. And you could see the decrease that I talked to you, primary driver of that decrease, took some like software systems. That were in the technology budget and we moved. Um, and then on thirty-eight, you see the, you know, there's just explanations to the changes. Pupil services, this is on slide thirty-nine, you can see. The main component of our pupil services budget is the out of district tuition. Um, we have some summer school in there, so our, our evaluation team leaders, and then our related service providers. I would say that almost all of this budget is really like. Out of district tuition. Our students, but our evaluation team leaders, they're not sitting in central office. One at each school, they're actually supporting. The budget for them is. And I would say the same about the related service providers like O T, E T, psychologists, all of those things. This isn't just people sitting at central office, this is really, a lot of this should belong, could, could. Be, very much be in that pie that says schools, because it, it's direct services to students. And you could see here, the, on the next slide, the. The changes, I think we need a new one of these, Sam, one that works, cuz I know you hate, hate that word, next slide, please. You could see the, the changes, so a lot of this is, look, talked about. Not having enough psychologists. At least three vacancies all year, so we had to go out and pay for those services. That, this budget reflects that, and then the out of district tuition, and we talked about the rates going up. Next, the next slide just goes into detail on each one of these, what were the major changes. Human resources, we don't have a lot of cost centers, but that's basically our human resources processing department, so as. Staff come on board and our recruitment efforts, human resources is a part of that. And in addition to that, our payroll department, also part of our human resource department, that's on the next slide, Sam. You can see, the, the biggest increase here is as part of our new contract, there's a hundred thousand dollars. That, that we have to add into for our new staff. Staff are gonna be part of an induction program that requires them to, um, work additional days, and that's part of the new. Contract, and that's why that, see that increase there. Um, school, the next cost center, I combined three of them, so the school committee. D I and receiver all together, and on the next slide, you can see the, the major shifts there. The one I wanna highlight is, um, family engagement. Is, you know, sits under this, this, uh, D E I position. We repurposed, so as part of rezoning, we were able to, um, you know, close two schools, eliminate two principals. We made a commitment, our equity worked. That person was doing it in a part-time role this year, in the time role. And as part of that, they're gonna be seeing, overseeing family engagement team. And part of this, part of the increase there is just moving family engagement coordinators off of Esser and onto the general fund there. The decrease in the school committee cost center is really a decrease in our, in our legal expenses. The big piece that is housed in the school cost center is legal expense. And, um, you know, they're, based on what we were analyzing this year for legal bills and what we need for next year. We were able to make some deductions to our legal expenses there. And then, and then the schools, so I think that, I feel like this is a good time to pause. Just answer any questions, I know that was a lot of details, probably more than. Any of our meetings.
Mr. Wallhand?
Yeah, thank you, yeah. Thank you for the, uh, presentation, yeah, we had the, uh, sub. Committee meeting, it kind of gave a broad overview of this presentation, just some of the highlights that you mentioned, just, um. Uh, the fund for the, the fund is gonna be from. Uh, the federal government will be ended in fiscal year twenty-four, right?
Oh, um, yeah, so Esser.
Esser.
Um, after, we have it for next year and it expires September. We've been asking, like, everybody in the state that has Esser money, has been asking for extension, like. And the, the state is not wavering because they need the federal government to. My experience with stuff like this is they wait till literally the day that it expires and they say, we'll do a no-cost extension. But we can't count on that and we don't wanna, you know, we don't wanna send money back that we know we desperately.
Thank you, yeah, and just like the funding formula from the, uh, the Student Opportunity Act. Kind of gave, uh, more revenue to the gateway cities. Conversely, it sort of short-changed some of the suburbs. Um, if you kind of look at the papers, some of the smaller, some of the smaller towns are looking for overrides. To fund their schooling, so they even hit negative, um. Negative, negatively, so I'm just hoping that the funding formula won't change again, there's political pushback from. Town, so that's, that's.
Me too.
One of my fears. And I know you stated that, you know, the. You stated that the overall, overall, um. Budget, basically, it's supported twelve percent in local taxation, eighty-eight percent by state. You sort of said that, a lot of, kind of implied that a lot of people know that fact, but I don't really think they do. Uh, that's, that's, that, that's just my, uh. Opinion that most people think that local taxation funds more, uh, a higher. Opinion that most people think that local taxation funds more, uh, a higher percent of the school budget. So that's just my take, but thank you.
I think a lot of people know it. I just don't think a lot of people care, like where the money comes from. Um, they can, they can see the challenges in front of them and. Like making decisions and stuff like that. And whenever you see an increase like this, like. Perception is like, oh man, that's, that's crazy. But like, right? I think I've shared this every, I don't think, I know for, I'll tell you with one hundred percent certainty. I've shared this in every public finance meeting that I've been here and I've been here for the last seven or more years. I've shared it in. Unity meetings, I've shared it in council chambers every single year.
People sort of hear what they want to hear too, you know? You know, it's easy to complain too. Thank you.
Alright, so we could keep moving. I'm gonna go through these quickly. These are just major cost drivers. You can see on, on page, on slide fifty, our average teacher salary has gone up over the last, uh. Top model, you can see that there's been a steady increase there. Um, you can see our health insurance costs have been going up on the next slide. Pretty drastically, but, um, thankfully the city did some incredible work with whoever. Uh, Kelly Curran and, and whatever team was working on, on negotiating for health insurance. This is the first time that I've seen a flat level service budget for health insurance. In fact, I think the city. Looking at a three percent decrease in health insurance costs, but you can see normally the, this was a huge cross, cross driver for us. And this, this upcoming year, it's not gonna be, which is really great, cause it allows us some of the other great things that. Talked about earlier in the presentation. The next slide is our charter trends. These are major cost drivers. You can see, you know, we spend at least, um. Thirteen, we spent thirteen point one million on, on charter assessments. And then. You can see that our reimbursement is only two point four million for next year. See that. Uh, but I think this is consistent. I think what I want to reiterate is that this isn't like a problem. The, the charter schools are get, are benefiting from student opportunity act as well. Just like we have a formula for X amount of students, charter schools. And we just are recipients of the money and then pass it to charterers. That live. Um, there's a slide in there for out of district tuition costs, just showing. That the amount of money that we get from the, from, through the formula for out of district tuition on the next slide. Um, it's, is not enough to cover our costs. We're always left with. In this case, FY twenty-four, we're left with, you know, seven point two million dollar gap that we have to tap into other. Through chapter seventy, we only get one point eight million in, in funding for out of district tuition. And then, and get circuit breaker revenue of three point one million, but our costs are. Take more from things that really we should, we could. Using for, for other, other things and we have to pay these costs. They're highly mandated. I think the, the last thing I wanna, kind of want to highlight on, on page fifty-six is. Like a lot of work went into rezoning and a lot of work went into the change that I talked. Shift from a system of autonomous schools, school system. And through that process, we were able to say, four arcade to eight schools. This is what our leadership teams need to look like. We need in a principal, we need a principal, we need an assistant principal. We want to make sure that every school has a dean of students. Uh, some of the feedback that I got throughout our refinement process is that SEL and behavior has been issuing. And so we made sure that in next year's budget, every school has a dean of students. Um, we right now are committed for one more year, the dean of management and ops. And every school should have, um, a student support coordinator or support team. So, and we went through. And, and said, this is what our staffing model is. Every school is gonna have a family engagement person, an office manager. Certain amount of counselors, certain amount of nurses. Those were all things that principals had to choose and, and make decisions on. They no longer have to do that. Um, on the teaching and learning side, did the same thing with, uh, literacy and expert. Teachers, literacy coaches, expert teachers, math coaches, interventionists. Um, we're committing next year to pre-grade level teachers, pre-teachers per grade level at least. To, to support our inclusive model, which means at some of our schools, we're gonna have really low class size. Um, you know, uh, I would say Morgan and Lawrence especially, based on the zone. Despite, you know, we could go down to two teachers in some grade levels, but we committed group zoning process. That that was gonna be a key part of our model to support inclusion and to support teacher teaming and collaboration. All the things that we want to see, um, uh, happen in our, in our school. So. Uh, we also committed that every school is gonna have at least four essentials. Teachers and the right amount of par educators. So those are, I wanted to reiterate that and the, the. The next slide is, is, is in detail. Again, this is the last time I'm gonna say it. Everything that we did throughout this process was aligned to our strategic priorities. Um, I could see what they are there. I'm not gonna read them off. And, um, how we use Esser, we could skip fifty-eight, cause I said that a bunch of times. In closing, on page fifty-nine, I'd like to just, uh. Reiterate that, you know, so some positive trends here are. That the student opportunity act is allowing us to do some things that we've never been able to do before. And how we use Esser was to accelerate that. And ev- like I said, everything aligns to our strategic plan. I think if you tab over one more time, there'll be some uncertainties here, but, um. Two uncertainties that I want to highlight is our na- labor market. It's been frustrating. We have this plan, we have this staffing model and, um, we have not been able to. Fully implement it based on the labor market. And the other unknown is inflation. If it continues to go up, it will have an impact. On, 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 on us as a district, on us as a community. And then to your point, Mr. Wallahan. Or Mr. Kennedy mentioned, like, we're relying heavily on, on full implementation of the student opportunity act. And I, and I think, you know, all indicators that the state has provided, they're really good. They're really in a good place financially to be able to continue to implement it. Um, it's just something we need to keep an eye on. And I want to thank everybody involved with. Developing this. This wasn't, I know on the cover page, it says superintendent's proposed budget. But as with everything that I do, um, everything that is in here and funded in here was a, a very collaborative process. I got a, a great leadership team that, that, um, has, 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 you know, really put everything. Uh, I think one thing I want to highlight is, uh, one of our core beliefs is that students are at the center of every decision that we make. Um, and, and I think this, this budget process really lives that, that core belief out. Our department head involvement through principals really sitting down with us. Um, and, and helping us design what the staffing model should be. Um, in the future, I think the, the hardest part, or over the next six months, we really need to look at the high schools. Similar to what we did with middle schools and elementary, we need to start looking at the high school and how we develop those budgets.
Mr. Wallahan?
Thank you. Um, yeah, just the last, you know. Verb there with the, uh, uh. Labor market. So that kind of, that kind of ties in with, um, with the pages that you were kind of looking for more. Teachers in the classroom, interventionist, um, math, uh, help. That sort of. That's something that you can pull off with the labor market that, to have like three classroom teachers per grade. Are those kind of specific goals or?
I mean. Gonna try like hell. Sure. Do I think that there's gonna be some vacancies? Yes. But I think, like, we need to. Go and cut positions and tell principals not to try to go recruit for teaching positions. I don't think that that's. I think we have a model, we need to. Try to staff that model. And principals, uh, uh, one thing that I've witnessed this year is principals. Simple and creative. And that's a certain point where like, hey, I can't get a science teacher. I want to convert this X, Y, Z. We're gonna sit down and have those come. They work with their.
Do you know science right here?
Oh, I know.
That was it. I didn't.
Um, the next presentation, I'm, I'm really gonna go through it quickly, is our panorama survey data. I don't think that. Like the high level summary that I provided, you know, one of the things that we're working. On as a, a leadership team is, is we've had panorama for a while. And I want to make sure that whatever we, like that, we're not just doing a survey to do a survey, that we're doing a survey to actually. Have actions and takeaways and reflections. And I think in the past couple of years. I don't feel like, um, I don't feel like we're, we're getting any like layering things that are informing. Some of the changes that we need to make. So I think part of some of. What I see in our survey is it has, on the Likert scale, it has five, five things. And then there's like. Two are pretty negative, two are pretty positive. And then there's like one in the middle that says sometimes. And I know that even myself, like, when I, when I don't want to go one way or the other, I go in the middle. And I think a lot of people do that. And, and for us, it's like, okay, it's not really helping us. Like, what do we need to dig into? Um, so we're, we're just looking at that as a leadership team. Um, and. This is just participation. You can see, um, student surveys, like, we're, we're pretty consistent in terms of the participation there. Um, teacher and staff surveys, we got about sixty, seventy-six percent of our staff participated. And then family, this is something we have struggled with in the past, is participation. I think the, you know, the, the. There's just survey fatigue out there, right? We did a lot of surveys with rezoning, we did surveys with middle school. Configuration, we did surveys with, uh, access, we did surveys, like, I think families are just surveyed out. Uh, but I think seven hundred and forty-three is, is, uh, uh, still a good number of our families. Um, we have about five thousand students and we've never been above fifteen hundred. But I do want to shout out, you know, the, uh, Sullivan for, they had one hundred percent of their students. In grades three and up fill out this survey. Lawrence had ninety-five percent of their students fill it out. And Kelly had ninety-three percent, who you just saw here. And then in terms of the staff participation, Sullivan again. A hundred percent of their staff filled out these surveys and transitions. And they, they deserve a lot of credit. There for whatever they did to make sure that there was a lot of participation. Then on the family side. Um, our, our highest participators were Metcalf, Ian White and Donnie. So I wanted to make sure we shouted them out. Cause they did a good job, um, getting. Making sure that this was a priority so that we can get.
Ms. Wilson?
We only had sixty-nine students take this survey?
Sixty-nine percent.
Sixty-nine, well, if, we should actually then be. Making sure that we listed it, that we label it properly. Because I understand you're saying percentages are below, but the, the, sorry. Because then, so we had, because we go from percentages to numbers. So that it's very, it's, it's not.
Yep.
Easy.
I hear you. I, that's part of my presentation is to explain that and I probably did a poor job. So yes, student participation was sixty-nine percent, staff participation was seventy-six percent. And then families, that was the number of families.
Why didn't we, why did we change to, to numbers for family and not continue with the percents?
It's just how we've always done it, no prime reason. And I don't think that, I think some of our families have multiple students in there. So. Like, I don't think that number would be perfect. I think for families, it makes the most sense to, uh, to list the number of families that participate.
Okay, thank you.
For context, you have about five thousand students. So some of our students, some, some of our families represent more than. One, two, three students. So it's, it's really hard to, to say what the percentage is. Next slide, please. Um, everybody has had, had access to this for, I hope, at least more than a week. Um, you guys could have gone in and looked at different schools, looked at different districts. I'm providing a real basic, high level thing, uh, high level summary of, of, of our, our, of what we saw. Some, some good things, some bad things, and then some reflections on our part. Um, some implications. How you read it, um, is. This was what I was talking about, the Likert scale. So when you, when you're reading through the summary. There's almost always frequently and sometimes and once in a while and almost never. And how we determine what's a favorable response is only the top two category, frequently and almost always. An example that like, kind of hurts me, not hurts me, but like. Uh, there, there, there was a question in there about students feeling a sense of belonging and it was about fifty percent of our students. Didn't feel, but that's only the top two. If you count the sometimes, which I'm not saying is a favorable response. That would be closer to eighty percent. Um, so, but this is how we presented. This is how panorama works. Favorable responses are only the top two. Um, so this was all the students. You can see some, some consistencies. This is all students in grades three to five. Um, nothing really, really jumps out here. You could see rigorous expectations was the same. There was a slight increase in academic needs. There was, or actually a slight decrease in academic needs in what I'm reading. Uh, slight decrease in safety, slight decrease in school belonging. Slight increase in student relationships, uh, but nothing really. Uh, I think we'll get to a point where, uh, and on the last slide where, you know, I can tell you what, as a, as a leadership team, we looked at and reflected on. Next slide, please. Sure.
You have a question?
I do.
Ms. Wilson?
I, I find school belonging very concerning to me. That you only have forty-three percent of our students in grades three through five.
Yeah.
Feel a belonging. Uh, that is extremely, extremely concerning to me.
Yeah, one of our big takeaways.
I mean, this is not great data. I think. Overall, from what my interpretation is, is, you know. So i- it's just extremely concerning that students feeling that they, they don't belong, they're not belonging. Do we actually have the, the question that was around that?
Yeah, you had access to that.
Yeah.
Um, all the questions that make up that category.
And I think what's really important is also looking at the breakdown by school.
Yeah.
Yes, and I have looked at breakdown.
Excelling while another one might be having some difficulties and some challenges.
Yeah, I would, I would agree with you, Ms. Wilson. My biggest reflection on that is. And it wasn't even in grades three to five, like grades, yeah. Grade six through twelve was, you know, like where my heart went, like. What are we doing? What do we need to do? Like, how could we make the culture of our schools more belonging? It's why we, it's why we're investing heavily on the, um, the Isley Institute and professional development for our teachers. So. That, that, you know, it's why we created the model that we have. It's why we want to make sure we have a dean of students in every single school. Why we need to have a strong, uh, s- uh, student support group, uh, team. Um, there's a lot of implications in that. To me, that was my biggest, when I saw this, e- exactly what you pointed out was my biggest takeaway.
Ms. Brunel?
Just a comment on that, um, with all the focus on belonging and engagement and, you know, clubs and after-school programs go a long way, you know, um, especially, you know, once now that we have middle schools and being able to have that. I know at Metcalf Middle, they have, um, a meeting on the fir- second Wednesday of every month for like, um, I don't know the anagram they use, but a, an alliance meeting for, you know, LGBTQ kids, and my son goes to it and he loves it. Um, and you know, just different groups like that, that, you know, as we redistrict and get back to having appropriate grade levels mixing, hopefully there'll be more opportunity for student-driven clubs and groups. They don't have to be district-sponsored, right? It could be that these seven kids want to have a Pokemon club every third Wednesday, and as long as their staff in the building, they'll probably get to do that, you know? So having those kinds of staff dedicated towards student activity and lifestyle, if you will, should help us be able to grow that back up in the career sports and.
Yeah, I agree. Rezoning and having dedicated middle schools, I, I hope is a step in the right direction in, in our staffing model for the middle schools next year and our schedule. Um, hopefully has a, makes a dent in terms of when we see the results next year. You know, students are gonna have an advisory block in the middle. Dr. Mahoney and I have been talking about eat, just needing to do more around that. Um, I hope to launch a, a, haven't quite been able to launch widely affect mentorship program, but something that I'm not gonna give up on and and hope to, to make sure we have a stronger launch for next year in that. I myself, and the mayor himself, is actually coaching some middle school kids, fifth and sixth graders in a summer league, and I, I made a commitment to myself. We, as a leadership team, we did something really cool. Um, at the beginning of, uh, at the end of last school year, uh, and this was Dr. Mahoney's idea. Dr. Mahoney asked everybody to take a piece of paper out, said, write something down, I'm gonna collect it, I'm gonna give it back to you in six months. What I had written down to myself was, make sure you're, you're, uh, you're, you're finding creative ways to connect. When I read that, I'm like, damn, I need to coach, I need to be a coach in the summer league. There's ten kids, polio public school kids, that I can actually interact with and get to know better, learn about, learn what's going on. I need to get in a classroom and shadow a teacher. I need, we need to launch, so like, it was a really cool thing that I appreciate he did. Um, but, uh, no, I, I hope that things like that, we can help reach more kids. And I think our, our, another thing is none of, our deans of students and student support teams have not really, you know, we've been, your point, focusing on instruction. They haven't provided any professional development, our support teams, who are so important to the culture in the building. Um, and it's something we need to invest in the upcoming summer, making sure that those teams are getting professional development too, on how to build relationships with kids, on how to resolve conflict in a way that's productive, in a way that students are at the center of that. Um, so there's a lot of work to do around that. There's no one answer, Ms. Wilson, like, oh, if we do this, it's gonna work, but it is something that sticks out like a sore thumb and something that we as a team need to get together and, and.
I want more comment on it too, like, you know, just talking, right? Like, these kids, especially ones who weren't, you know, as developed socially and emotionally. COVID had a huge impact on, like, those kids that are just prior to middle school now. You know, they forgot how to, like, have a debate on the playground so that Billy gets the ball first without it erupting into a big argument because, you know, Billy wasn't around for three years, so they didn't have to share with Billy, you know, like, just those kinds of conversations on how to be, ho- how to problem solve, how, you know, without it escalating. You know, like, these kids lost that, you know, never mind critical thinking, just the ability to compromise and to work as a group and, you know, and to your point, there's so much more than academics and though, so much more than sports, right? There's so much that kids are into that isn't a- athletics-related, um, that still provides a lot of opportunity for social and emotional learning, so.
Yeah, um, the next slide is, again, I don't want to spend, I, I respect that, you know, we've given you access and, um, this was also in the packet, so I don't. This is our grade, student surveys, grade six to twelve. Um, I think nothing in here is surprising, but it, it, it is alarming. It's, I'm not saying it's, it's bad, it's good. You know, safety comes to mind. Now, I know, um, you know, it's one of the things that I think is tied to school climate and culture, and you could see there that there was a dip from in-school climate as well, from last year's survey results to this year's survey results. Um, and we'll get to, we'll get into some reflection later on in the presentation. These are some of the details on the next slide. Or, I, I just wanted to highlight some positive, some like average, you know, um, things that we looked at and then negatives, and we coded it as like green, yellow, and red. You can see from the student survey for all, in grades three, five, um, you know, one of the questions that we asked is, are there adults at your school whom you can go to for help if you need it right now? And, you know, or in three to five, ninety percent of the kids responded favorably, and eighty percent in grade six to twelve. Um, overall, how much do you feel like you belong at school? That's the, that's that point that, uh, Ms. Wilson brought up. Sixty-three, but look at grades six to twelve, forty-seven. Those are a one-point and five-point drop. Despite being only a small drop, it's still, it's still a really low, low number that we need to, need to dig into. And then you can see all the way at the bottom, how often do your teachers seem to be excited to be teaching your class? Um, our responses amongst students was. So it does just speak to like, okay, based on that information, how can you make learning, uh, more exciting? How, give that feedback to some of our teachers so that they're aware of, of their tone and how they're feeling. Teacher responses, for the most part, was favorable. I will, you know, I, I, I will say I did not expect favorable responses this year, especially, um, at a time where we're rezoning and we're moving people around, and some of those decisions were not very popular. I thought that, you know, our teacher responses were gonna be really, really, really bad. And in fact, that's not the case, um, from, which, which I'm proud of. I think our principals did a lot of work trying to help manage a lot of, a lot of the change that, that teachers were experiencing. Um, and, and these results show that. Staff is, uh, non-teachers?
Mr. Romero?
Um, I just kind of want to, uh, this one out real quick, um, are these, need more resources?
Um, I think that if you break down that question, I think it talks about having a staffing market has, has that, um, that is, like, if we do have money for supplies and that. Where teachers have experienced a lot of discomfort with resources relates to like, teachers having to step up. You can't have subs, having to cover classrooms, and teachers, they're not, they're not be, us not being able to fill a vacancy and, and a teacher that was supposed to be an academic intervention not, and is now in a core classroom, like, things like that, um, I think create the perception that there's not resources. When, when we do have funding, it's just like, basically, especially this year. Next slide is non-teacher staff. Um, and I think we could get that one. There's nothing glaring there. Um, and a- again, uh, uh, on the teacher survey, you have some highlights here. Uh, do the leaders communicate a clear vision? We saw a seven-point increase. Um, how effective do school leaders model support and data-driven decision-making? We saw an eight-point increase. And how often does your school, school show respect for all students? Saw a one-point increase. And then, um, on the negative side, all the way down to the red, you can see that when we said, when the school makes important decisions, how much input do teachers have? Um, that was not a favorable response, twenty-three percent. And I think, you know, this was probably around rezoning, but I'm not, not gonna make any assumptions, but when I saw that, I, you know, I'm not surprised that there were some people out there that felt, you know, they didn't really have, uh, a say in some of the decisions that were made as it related to rezoning, where they're going, what they're teaching, that. Then we have a similar slide for all staff. How often, uh, on the next slide, how often does your school embrace all students? Seven-point increase. Communicating a clear vision, five-point increase, and then a three-point decrease. And for students who need the extra support, how difficult is it for them to get the support that they need? Saw a three-point decrease there. Um, I think families is where we, you know, every year for the last many years, we, it's been pretty, can't see any increases or decreases on the next slide. But we did highlight some positives that we saw. Which is on the next slide.
Oh, one moment. Ms. Tinsley Williams?
Mrs. Soto, I think we talked about this last week. Um, do you have, are you training paraprofessionals to help the teachers? Academics is very important. The students need to want to come to school. Um, I'm good at arts and crafts, so I'll be working with Mr. Gates to go into the school and help the girls. Um, if you would train, and you probably are doing it, training paraprofessionals, they can help the teachers. That would make it easier because they could make fun for, children have to have fun also. Academics is very important, but we want these kids to want to come to school. And we gotta make it, I, I think, a priority to see what we can do to make them happy, to help them.
Yeah, I agree with you, Ms. Tinsley Williams. I think over the winter break, vacation, it's something that struggling with in my own head, because I would talk to students and the ma- the majority of the students that I talked to around what needs to be fixed, majority of them said, I'm bored, like, school's not fun. It led us to, one of the things that I did, and I mentioned at one of the school committee meetings, was I allocated five hundred thousand dollars to all of our schools to make school joyous. Like, here's five hundred thousand dollars, you can't spend it on anything else other than making school fun. So what are you gonna do?
That's what happens.
A lot of you have seen stuff on social media about staff appreciation and some of the bounce houses here, there's kids are going on field trips. Some Metcalf, like, that's how that money was used, and I think that's, to me, that was one of my highlights as, uh, for this year, like, as hard of a year as it's been, be able to see kids enjoying themselves and going on field trips and staff feeling appreciated through that, like, just that reflection of like, we need to make school a joyous place.
And just, excuse me, just like, um, my friend here said, maybe we could have glee clubs, sings, kids need to have fun. So maybe get some clubs after school, maybe they could sing. I mean, just come up with something, I don't know.
Do have clubs, like, at Sullivan especially, they're, I think they do a really good job at schools that have strong skills. Like, we just need to make sure that every school has
Right.
some of those opportunities, I agree with.
Thank you.
We have Ms. Wilson and then Mr. Romero.
How many years have we been doing the panorama now?
Um, I would say five years.
Is there any way that we can get data, um, so we can look at if there's, what kind of shift there's been in over the past five years? I'd love to see what was five years ago versus what's now. To see, you know, if there has been some positive things. So, because the numbers are concerning in, in many areas, I'd love to see if, yeah, like, there's any timing around things? Is there anything that we, that could be traced back to a significant shift?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Um, I have, I can transfer over to you twenty-twenty, I can give you twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two.
I think what we.
If you want it combined to see, like.
I think what we could try to do is just give, give you that access so that you can go in and look at previous years, or I'm not sure. Yeah, I think that, to me, that's the easiest thing to do, but I don't want to make, if that's gonna be hard, I don't want to.
Oh, I'd be happy to look through, through all of them.
Okay. Can, we can, I added that as a next step to make sure you had access, not just to last year, this year, but if there's a way for you to look at previous years as well.
Yeah, because I de- I definitely would like to go back.
And if there's not, then I'll have our data team put something together that shows, here's where we were in fifteen, or whenever we first started.
So if we could, if I could have these slides, I'm sure you did presentations over the past few years, similar, then that would be lovely.
Okay.
I wasn't here for all of them.
Sure. Um, here's some, you know, family survey. I think one of the things that we've worked really hard on is we have new people in transportation. Becca Lamb has stepped up. She's in, in charge of the enrollment center. She's just been doing an incredible job being responsive to families. Families responded favorably to, their answers are quickly appropriate. Uh, that's something that our, our transportation team, they're kudos for, that hasn't always been the case. And on the negative side, um, how often do you need to communicate via email or phone about your child with your teachers? Only fifty-one percent of families had, had favorable responses. So last slide, um, a, a brief, like, what are the implications? So we looked at this as a leadership team and saw some increases, some decreases, uh, in, in different areas. We looked at certain schools. We did a deep dive into the data. And our biggest takeaways is, you know, we need to develop stronger plans for, to support, um, SEL students, especially in grades six to twelve. And I'm not just saying SEL, but like, AVEER supports and SEL. Like, I think we made a good shift this year. Last year, the only people that were delivering SEL trails instruction were our counselors. This year, we made sure that, um, students were getting regular touchpoints with that curriculum, not just by the counselor, but by teachers that they're, that was a good step in the right direction, but the, the feedback has been like, this is good for elementary students, but like, we need a little, something more relatable for our older students. Something we need to reflect on, think about, and plan for in the upcoming year. Um, you know, we, we gotta think about how to develop more opportunities for student voice, especially in grade six to twelve. Yes, I have a high school cabinet. Yes, we have, uh, student councils at the high school. Yes, I have a middle school cabinet, but we gotta figure out ways for students to feel heard, especially our older students, uh, some, something like that. That's a great, uh, that is a very good suggestion, like.
But for Gmail, anonymous Gmail, just send an email, because pretty much everyone has phones.
Not next year.
I know, but.
They'll have them.
But they could still email with their, you know, s- school-issued Chromebooks.
Um, we gotta provide opportunities for elementary and middle school students to connect their school, new school, and feel a sense of belonging. Especially, especially in this year where so many kids are moving to a new school. especially, especially in this year where so many kids are moving to a new school. Friends, over the summer, we have to make sure we have those opportunities. Spend some time, like, we talk about every year, moving from the management and operations portion of our trajectory to rigor and learning. Next year, it might, next year, we might not be that quick because our school teams are starting meeting each other for the first time. But it is something that we need to problem solve. And then around, you know, aligned to the school culture, we have our Reach Learner Profile, and we're trying to figure out a way for all schools to really lean into that. And, you know, some schools, like, say Kelly Soar, and they have different, you know, acronym for like, what they wanna see as a district, we came up with this. How could we use this in a way that could positively impact the culture and experience? That's something that we're working with our elementary school team, our And lastly, we, you know, need to make sure every school has a Dina student with additional student support team and some professional development to help them, help them be successful.
Ms. Wilson?
Never mind, thank you.
Oh, Ms. Rivera Cologne?
I went through and looked at data because that's something that I like to do. About 30% of the families who responded had more than one student in the in the system, which is, you know, then those students are very well represented by having someone actually speak on their behalf. But I was, and I tried, I poked around and looked around and I didn't really see a way, and maybe there is, but I didn't really see a way to know the total students in each bin. Like, how many students do we have between third grade and fifth grade? Because I know that there were 805 respondents from that bin, but I don't know what is the representation from that, from their peers? And the same with the six to 12? Because, for example, when we talk about the belonging, being a few points different from 805 students is a different impact than having it from 1697, right? Like, it's because there's a lot more student voice represented there. So I would be interested to know, like, and they don't have to be perfect, but more or less ballpark to know how many people are, we're actually capturing their voice.
How many students?
Yeah.
But by grade level.
Represent that 69% by grade level?
Right. Yeah, because we're not, you know, it's 69%, but maybe, you know, maybe we have really well, right, exactly. Wanna know whose voices are recapturing. And then the follow-up to that is, then how do, what are the plans to then capture the voices that are left out because they didn't fill out the survey? And this was hard because nobody wanted to take another survey. But how do we capture student voice? Especially once we figure out who actually responded, then we can target those voices that we haven't heard yet. Because basically, based on the breakdown of the schools that you gave us, for one, two, and three, that was 72% of the survey was basically among three schools.
Four families.
Four families, yeah. So it's, you know, we still need to hear from all the schools, you know. What are the plans, what plans do you have in place to capture those voices?
Yeah. Mayor, one of my favorite things that I'll never forget that came out of his mouth, there's a lot of good things. But one of the things that he said that really resonated with, like, the hardest things about one of the most important things, but also one of the hardest things, that our voter turn, that every time a lot of survey or have community meetings and like, despite having flyers and phone calls and emails, you got 20 people to show up. So like, I think that, like, we're going to be relentless. It's one of our equity commitments to incorporate the voices of those impacted, especially those who have been left behind. Need to live out that commitment every day. So like, yes, people are survey fatigue. Yes, it may be hard to show up to a meeting, but tried like, having a bounce house at one of our meetings, tried having daycare at some of our meetings. Like, we're trying everything, and I wanna just say, we're gonna continue to be committed to that equity commitment. Not like one strategy that I think is say, "No, what, if we do that, it's gonna fix that engagement issue." Hard, and try really hard, continue to get that.
Yeah, and also look through and see what are best practices, because you had 100% students completed at Sullivan.
Yeah. Students in grades three, nobody in
Right, right.
Yeah, it's something, that's a great point, like, Sasha, what did you do?
Right, you have wisdom in the school. So how, how to ask them how to better engage their school?
I think that the student engagement was a little better, right? It's 69% compared to the family engagement. Family engagement is the, I think, the biggest challenge.
Ms. Wilson?
So, just quickly, I just wanna say, a great opportunity to engage in families, which I know we do, is when we have celebrations for Student of the Month. I cannot tell you how many families go to those events because they're so proud of their children. And it's a great positive recognition for students. And I think it's just a way to continue that positivity.
Mr. Romero, did you have your hand up? You're all set, okay. All right, so I guess that completes the panorama survey results. Moving on to new business, approval of meeting minutes. I don't know if you wanna take it as a bundle, so if some, you guys wanna take it as a bundle, is there a motion?
Yes, let's take it as a bundle, please.
There's a motion to take the following meeting minutes as a bundle, 324, 2423, 12723 of the finance subcommittee meeting minutes, and 11722 of the policy subcommittee meeting minutes. We have a motion by Ms. Wilson, seconded by whom? Okay, so, Mr. Wallahan. Any discussion? Yes, so, real quickly, April 24th, we have to go back. Ms. Tensley-Williams, if I'm not mistaken, you were not here last month. So, we have, we have to make sure that anywhere where there's a vote with her name and attendance, that she's put down as absent. Also, under the vice chair report, it says that the, the training date was moved to May 20th. It's May 22nd at 6:00 PM. So that's the one for the 424. Any other? So, with those corrections being made, is there a motion?
Motion to accept?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, no, any abstain, no, motion passes unanimously. Ongoing business, so in your packet again, we're constantly monitoring the chronic absenteeism update. That's FYI, middle school building update, FYI. I don't know if somebody wanted to give a quick report on that.
Uh, we're just kinda, I mean, so we presented to the finance committee, it went very well. We got tabled because they had two minor questions. Hoping to go back in front of finance soon, we know it will be before June 1. Uh, Mr. McGivern, who's the chair of finance, made it clear that he intends on finance voting on the project at the next meeting. And then it would get referred back to the full council for a vote. Um, so, other than that, we have a facilities assessment committee meeting with the MSBA on Wednesday. We have another meeting with them next week. So there's a lot of meetings in between meetings, but the school building committee doesn't meet again until the first Thursday of June. Second, I believe, is that correct, gentlemen? In my calendar, if you pause.
I know, the first Thursday is June 1st.
Uh, then that would be it.
At what time?
6:00 PM?
And that's when Dean graduation is.
No, it's not then, yeah. I'll let you know when our next
Sounds like a plan. Thank you, Ms. Brunel. The next one is updates from subcommittee, so we have the policy subcommittee.
So we've met, I error, I failed to have things added to tonight's agenda. Will be added to our next agenda, we have started reviewing some of our finance policies. We've had some great discussions, so they'll be forwarded. Um, I am not sure as to the best way to share with you changes, so I'm gonna be doing a document that includes all of the current policies that we have, as well as a packet of what was approved, just so you can compare the two to see the different language. I think that's the best way, to have two different packets, so that can be reviewed.
Unless it's done in, with red ink, you know, like
There's, there's significant changes in some of them. So it would be very hard to do that, I'll be really honest with you.
Okay.
It's very confusing, I think. I think if we give a clean policy and then we talk about what the, what the changes were.
When's your next meeting, you said?
Our next meeting is June 12th.
And if I have any recommended change, that's
Then come back and highlight in.
Highlight it and
I agree, I think that's best, yeah.
Uh, finance subcommittee, Mr. Wallahan?
Thank you. Yeah, we met on the finance, we met on
Eighth?
11th, yeah, 11th, so the bureau gave a presentation, mostly what you saw tonight, just a quick recap, the budget process as it stands now, and what to expect next year, what the changes to the, what the law went forward. My question to Mrs. Soto is, when will the budget hearing be, the public hearing?
That's already posted, Sam, do we have that?
I have the date. Our next school committee meeting, June 20th?
Yeah, June 20th is
At 5:45. 5:45. I have 5:45. I have a 5:45.
Yeah, and that's just a meeting where we invite anybody from the public, we post the big budget booklet. You have it available for public viewing. And then anybody for the, the, anybody from the public that has a question or has a comment or public, speak out as it relates to the budget. They have an opportunity to do that. Typically, we don't get anybody to show up. Today was like, a heavy lift, like, we're not gonna go, we're not gonna have another presentation going through the whole budget. Today was that meeting. In June, it's really like, okay, is anybody here from the public wanna say anything? No, okay, then I'm not gonna be a separate president. Guys, we'll get budget books with all the information we had and more, or of discussion was
Could, um, maybe, maybe, uh, committee as a whole, should we maybe make a motion that night to adopt the budget? I know we don't have really, or something that Desi wants us to do.
No, we can only vote to receive the budget presented by the receiver.
Thank you.
That like a
We're not really doing anything with it.
Is there law against?
We don't have, we don't have We, okay, no, we can't, because it's like saying that we're, obviously, we'd have to accept. It's not like we can turn around and say, "No," and you're gonna be like, "Oh, okay." Um, so, all it is, is that we are, all we're doing is just voting to accept your, your budget that was created.
If we vote?
Not that to accept, what was it, to receive?
To receive. If we voted for, it would be a misrepresentation to our constituents because we don't have that ability.
I'm not, I'm not advocating either way, I'm just serious.
We can vote on our meeting minutes because, I mean, I, it doesn't even make sense why we're doing that, but anyways, whatever. Okay, so June 20th, so here's, here's my thing. Ms. Brunel was telling me that there's a possibility that that could be a backup date for city council on the vote for the proposed schools, so. Is there, this is what we, I think I recall, this is what we've done before. We do the public hearing, right? And we put whatever time it is, say it's at 5, say it's at 5:30. But we don't put down that our school committee meeting is at 6, because then, that means we'd have to, we'd have to stop, wait, 6 o'clock, then we can start. But if you put school committee meeting to followed, follows, you know, to be followed after public hearing, that means if, if nobody shows up for the, for the budget hearing, then we can go right into, we, we close out the budget hearing and then we come right back in for the regular school committee meeting. Yep. Alright, so that's it. Alright, well, I hold your role. Um, join city council school committee, Ms. Brunel? Nothing?
Nothing. I'll work with Sam to get our minutes from our last meeting and hopefully have But here's the issue, we don't meet, so the subcommittee itself has to approve the minutes. We don't have a meeting coming up. How do I approve the time? I can't.
Well, I would, I would recommend and tell him we need to meet.
Not tell him, I
Okay, so we meet just to approve the minutes? Approve the minutes, it could, aren't you guys still also talking about, like, I don't know, the middle school?
One doesn't report back to city council on stuff that doesn't come from city council, so there's some confusion.
Yeah, we'll talk, alrighty. Okay, so that's it, the other part was out-of-state field trips.
Actually, we did not get an update from Diversity Equity and Inclusion Subcommittee.
He's not here.
I was just wondering if anyone else was gonna do that.
And there's, and I did see that the Equity Task Force meets bi-monthly, so so I don't know if, please, can I be emailed to? Because, I mean, if, if I have to, you know, take time off, I'll
Can I just, I have to, I have to ask this. If we're having these meetings, should someone else be put as the chair of the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Subcommittee? Because there have been none this year. I, I just, I feel I need to ask that question.
Look into that. So, moving on to out-of-state field trips and student activity, you guys got those? Out-of-state field trips? No, we just got the paper, I mean, it's just for you guys to look at, it's not like you can approve it anyways. Um, and that's it. Any announcements? I know the mayor had an announcement around these things.
Do you guys wanna remove these, or do you wanna keep them?
So go one by one. Ms. Wilson, do you, do you want yours or remove?
I remove.
Find one way or another?
Mr. Collmore?
I could go either way, but
Neutral. Neutral. Don't wanna wear this, it doesn't matter, you can take them all down.
There's consensus, we'll get them removed.
Alright, so we'll get these removed, and then we can all hold hands and sing kumbaya. Mr. Wallahan?
Sorry, real quick, I haven't received an invitation to the Memorial Day ceremony that come in, I don't know whether That come in, I don't know whether there's gonna be invitations forthcoming.
Yeah, I don't think there's, let me, it it's happening, I don't think an invitation is the form of extent to actually anybody, let me uh.
Or if you can just get us the dates at least, the date and like the location is gonna be the time, that'll be great.
Thank you.
Yep, the memorial day, Ms. Brunel?
So we have um Latino scholarship fund dinner coming up?
Yeah, that's in June. We're, we already have our table.
And we have a table, so if you guys wanna go, make sure you let Sam know.
June eighth, six P M.
I think it's at the log cabin. And what about Rising Stars?
That's, that's next week, that is. Rising Stars is May twenty fifth at five thirty here at Dean.
They already know.
The kids know.
Okay, cuz my daughter literally said that she got it, I'm like, wouldn't you know already, I don't know.
I just, I have some.
Oh, yeah, go right ahead.
So we have D-PAC tomorrow at six o'clock, um they're gonna be talking about food service. Our food service uh team is gonna be there to to um have a discussion with with the families. Um it does happen to be at the same time as the the mayor's uh address. That's good via Zoom, um CPAC's still TBD. Uh but they're looking at uh uh May twenty fourth as a possible date, once those, once those dates are solidified, uh. We'll let, we'll let everyone know, uh Rising Stars is May twenty fifth, five thirty at Dean. Um there is gonna be a PEC sunset barbecue from four thirty to six thirty, um when is that? Sam, I don't have a date here. Um and that's like, you know, PEC is actually gonna be worn down, so like wanna have like a closing. School barbecue, like all the kids from there, all the teachers from there, so. We're trying to just encourage a lot of people to go cuz that could be the last that have in that old building. Hopefully, the next one we have is in a new building. That is May, Sam, May thirty first, four thirty to six thirty.
Where?
At PEC. LPAC is also on Zoom, June seventh at five thirty. And the Latino scholarship dinner, we just talked about six P M log cabin.
Alrighty, great, so we got all those announcements, so with that being said, is there a motion?
I would like to motion to adjourn.
Okay, Ms. Wilson, motion to adjourn, is there a second? Ms. Tensley Wi- Williams, all those in favor? I know, nobody's opposing, any opposed, abstain, no, motion passes, meeting adjourned at nine nineteen.